All right, can I call a meeting to order for the regular meeting to order for Monday, April 7th, 2025? I'm gonna do the public hearing zoning by law number 747 2025 and I'll call in staff to run the hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to call the open public hearing charter at 5:00 PM. So, good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public and staff. The public hearings being held to receive public input on zoning by law number 747 2025, which proposes a comprehensive update to the district zoning regulations. Before we begin, I will invite our chief administrative officer, Ms. Scott, to provide a overview of the project.
Thank you. The District of Tumbler Ridge has undertaken a comprehensive review and modernization of its zoning by law to ensure that it aligns with the community's evolving needs and the official community plan, OCP, which was adopted in 2023. The current zoning by law, number 585 2012, as amended, has served the district for over a decade. However, as development trends shift, housing demands evolve, and best practices in land use planning advance, the need for a more modern, user-friendly, and adaptive zoning framework has become evident. The goal of the zoning by law number 747 2025 is to simplify zoning regulations, enhance clarity, and provide a framework that supports sustainable and responsible growth while ensuring consistency with the OCP. The zoning by law update process began in spring of 2022 and has undergone multiple phases of public and council engagement to ensure it reflects community needs. The process started with a public open house and online survey in 2022, gathering initial feedback on zoning challenges and priorities. This was followed by council workshops in 2023 and 2024 where key policy directions were discussed. And then in fall of 2024, a second public open house and online survey provided residents with another opportunity to review and comment on the draft by law. After incorporating feedback, the by law underwent a final review by the Policies and Priorities Committee in February of 2025, before being brought forward to first reading by council on March 3rd, 2025, officially initiating the adoption process. Under the Local Government Act, a public hearing is not required for a zoning by law that is consistent with the OCP. However, given the comprehensive nature of this update, council has chosen to hold this hearing to ensure full transparency and public participation before proceeding with further readings. Tonight's public hearing provides an additional opportunity for residents and stakeholders to voice their input. Following this hearing, council may choose to proceed with second and third readings if no major concerns are raised, or council can defer further readings if additional revisions or clarifications are required. Council will make its decision at a later report in this meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. The next item is public notice. So, to maximize public awareness and encourage participation before the by law proceeded to second and third readings, the administration carried out an extensive outreach campaign. The effort began on March 20th with pre-advertising in the newspaper and on local social media notifying residents of the upcoming public hearing. On March 28th, the formal public notice was published across all required platforms, including this week's website, social media, and community bulletin boards, in accordance with public notice by law number 730 2023. Additional advertisements were placed on social media on March 31st, April 2nd, and April 4th to further reinforce the message. And on March 31st and April 1st, printed notice were delivered to every mailbox in town, ensuring all residents received direct notification. Finally, a second newspaper advertisement was published on April 3rd to provide one last reminder before the hearing. The notice of public hearing is available there and here in the front if anyone wants to see. Next item is written submissions. We received one written submission and I will read it now. The comments are from Michael Naylor, resident of Tumbler Ridge, received on April 6th, 2025, submitted over email at corporate@dtr.ca. So, hello, I would like to make the following suggestions for change to the proposed by laws. Scratching the rule, restricting home business work hours between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM, and replacing these with no audible noise is permitted outside the property after 8:00 PM. This is a lot more reasonable and possible than regulating a designer, lawyer, or artist can't work late at night. Increasing the limit of customers through a home-based business to 50 a week. The current limit is one a day if working Monday to Sunday. We shouldn't seek to limit residents from trying to make ends meet or penalize them if increased licensee for having a couple of people a day come visit their mass massage business in a basement, for example. Include requirements for cycle lands and walkable pavements on all roads for safe non-vehicular access. Include requirements for electric vehicle charging outlets in commercial developments, parking areas, and tourism hotspots. Support EVs or not. There's going to be a dramatic increase on PH EVs and batteries EVs in the next few years as a result of climate goals and rapidly involving battery technology making EVs sensible for northern climates. Limit short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods to properties that are owner-occupied, that are renting out a portion of their property while the owner is physically present, for example, a conventional bed and breakfast. New designated tourism zone property development areas outside of existing residential areas, so people are aware upfront of where they are buying and developers, investors can invest under a secure understanding of tourism use licensing. Specifically licensed properties that have the written permission from neighboring properties annually each year, as opposed to mayor notification that next door is about to become a party house with no legal recourse. And at the bare minimum, require the property owner to be physically available to respond to any noise or problem complaint in person within 15 minutes. For example, they have to be a local TR resident that lives here and is physically present during the tourist's visit. And significantly increase the taxation charged to owners of these properties to a cover employment of new district employees. Test specifically with litter picking to keep our streets sidewalks and nature free of garbage that is increasing seen around town. Why? Current zoning allows a limited number of properties in an area, which isn't a long-term sustainable or fair model. Airbnbs should be owned by investors that live thousands of kilometers away that provide zero benefit to the local community. To disrupt the peace and quiet enjoyed by local residents who may have invested their life savings into their retirement home, only to find that a new group of partners can appear every 48 hours next door with minimal options to contend the practice as soon as someone wants to run a mini hotel next door. These business properties will rapidly escalate in value due to sizable realizable profits. In short-term rentals causing increase in the general rental rates to residents that actually live here. A decrease in the supply of long-term rental housing and drop in demand and property values for the second-class community members that didn't get an application in during the limited number of approval when this limit breached into the future. With the mine presently running and house prices high, anyone affected by this suggested change can still sell their homes at a generous market value incurring no financial loss. The District of Tumbler Ridge has a golden opportunity to reverse course on short-term rentals with minimal impact at this stage. I truly believe that there is no community in BC that has overwhelmingly benefited from permitting whole-home vacation rentals of owner-not-presented properties. And the recent by law chains in other tourism districts on the west coast of similar size to this to Tumbler Ridge support this opinion. My belief is that by law seeking to expand tourism in Tumbler Ridge should be for the benefit of local residents and not non-resident investors while disrupting quiet neighborhoods and further increasing the unaffordability. I fully support the extension of owner-on-site conventional bed and breakfast as this benefits both local residents and tourists alike by offering what I believe is a real Tumbler Ridge community experience and the required on-site owner accountability in case of problems. Thank you for your consideration, Michael Naylor. So, this was the only written comment that we received. And now I will call for comments from the gallery. We invite public comments. If you wish to speak, please approach the podium. Clearly state your name and your relation to this matter if you are affected to this matter. Everyone here is a resident of Tumbler Ridge, but it could be other case like a business owner or a property owner. The public hearing has been convened to hear from the public on the proposed by law. All attendees are welcome to express their views. However, comments must be limited to the subject matter of the by law under consideration. If comments stray from the topic, speakers may be asked to return to the matter or conclude their remarks. Council members may ask questions for clarification, but this is not a forum for debate. The role of council at this hearing is to listen to the public's input. Following the close of the hearing, council may proceed to consider an act on the proposed by law without further notice or opportunity for public comments. First call for comments. Any comments from the public? None? You can come here and make your comments if it's related to the by law.
I don't know, maybe it's silly, but... So, if you had a B and B, or what do you call it when someone comes and stays at your place when you're away? I know when I worked in Whistler, people would rent their house out if they went away for Christmas. So, you're saying you can't have somebody staying in your house and charge them rent while you're not in town if it's short term? If you weren't to be in town, could you have somebody else there in town to look after things for you? Or does the homeowner have to be there in Tumbler Ridge while somebody else is staying at your place? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Okay. So, the public hearing purpose is to bring comments. So, probably because we will not be able to answer your question right now. Sorry. Second call for comments. Are there any additional speakers wishing to comment on the proposed by law? No. Third and final call for comments. This is the third and final call for public comments. Hearing no further comments. I will now close the public hearing at 5:14. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. When we get to that and the topic, we'll be able to answer those questions for you. Make sure we do. Take your privilege agenda, please. Counsel Norbury?
That the April 7th, 2025 regular council meeting agenda be adopted as presented.
Secondary. Counsel Dusso. All in favor? Carried. Adoption of minutes for March 11th, 2025 budget meeting of council minutes. Recommendation, please, Counsel Nuxena?
That the March 11th, 2025 budget meeting of council minutes be adopted as presented.
Secondary. Counsel Hoffman. Any errors or omissions from council? Staff?
No.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. March 17th, 2025 regular meeting of council minutes. Recommendation, please, Counsel Dusso?
That the March 17th, 2025 regular council minutes be adopted as presented.
Secondary. Counsel Norbury. Any errors or omissions from council? Staff?
No.
Thank you. Business arising from the minutes, council? Staff?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to delegations. Pacific Northern Gas, David Keer, PNG, invited by council to discuss the withdrawal of the application for the expenditure and what it means for the future gas supplies for Tumbler Ridge. David, welcome. I know you're joining us via Zoom. Welcome. Thank you very much for answering our request to join us at a meeting.
Thank you for having me and good evening, Mayor Kukalka and council. Just wanted to do a quick volume check. Am I coming through loud and clear?
You are.
Fantastic. I believe I can share my screen, so I'll see if I can get this presentation up for you. Folks can confirm when that shows up?
It's there.
Fantastic. Let's make it a little bigger. So, by all means, I'm super flexible to talk through any items or matters that you might like to discuss. I thought it would be especially timely to walk through our revenue requirements application for Tumbler Ridge, which deals with the withdrawal of the regulatory application for the planned repairs. You could not have picked a better date. We've just lodged these applications with the BC Utilities Commission on the 2nd of April. And in fact, they're just in the process of going live on the commission's website. So, you are getting a sneak peek, hot off the press. Maybe just a quick reminder for folks. When I talk about revenue requirements applications, you're probably saying, look, David, I don't work for a utility. I have no idea what you mean by that. So, PNG has these different service areas. We talked about this a little bit last time. And in effect, we look at our PNG West system and we roll in Grand Isle and we do a revenue requirement application for the West. And then we do a rolled-in revenue requirement for Dawson Creek and Fort St. John together. And then we do Tumbler Ridge separately. So, three discreet and separate revenue requirement applications for the period, the three-year period, 2025, 2026, and 2027 calendar. So, what's a revenue requirement application? That's when as a regulated utility, PNG says, what are all of the costs required to provide service to our different classes of customers, residential, small, commercial, large, commercial, and industrial? And then we put those costs in front of the regulator, our economic regulator, the BC Utilities Commission. And it's the commission's job to say, yes, PNG, your costs are prudent, your costs are efficient, and we will allow you to recover those costs in rates. Now, if, when we look at that revenue and cost equation, if costs are higher than revenues, then rates need to go up to recover the difference. If costs are lower than revenues, then rates go down. That's what we call a revenue deficiency or a revenue sufficiency. It's a quick snapshot. We filed last week, three-year period, the three different service areas that I just described. To be clear, this only talks to our basic charges and our delivery rates. Anything to do with the gas commodity itself is a straight flow-through. And some of you may recall that we put in place interim rates on the 1st of January. So, those rates have applied from now and will apply until the 30th of April. And then what we're proposing, if the commission agrees, is that the new rates, which I'll talk about in a moment, would take effect on the 1st of May, 2025. So, the new rates would replace the interim rates. You can hit me with questions as we go, or you can hold them to the end. No worries either way. Okay, a bunch of different numbers on the screen. I think some of you have this printed as well. So, I'm going to try and make this complex information a bit more simple. These are the rates that apply to residential customers in Tumbler Ridge. These are the components of the charges. The one in the left on the yellow is called a basic monthly charge. Think of it as just being, that's the straight administration cost. We've got a meter there. We need to do customer care. We need to do billing. It's basically 10 bucks a month. Then we move into the delivery charge components on the right. And there's a bunch of complex pieces here. We start with a delivery charge. And the first box I'm looking at is the 2024 rates. The second block is the interim rates, which came into effect on the 1st of January. And then the third table are the new proposed rates that we're suggesting will come into effect on the 1st of May, subject to commission approval. And we're comparing across each of those different columns, the various charge components. So, starting with basic monthly charge, it was 9.96 in 2024. That went up by 28 cents on an interim basis, and we're going to put it back down to where it was in 2024. The delivery charge, 13.276, well, lots of decimal places. Let's just call that 1328 was the 2024 rate. And then there's these other little pieces. So, I'll move from left to right to help you understand the components. Company use rider. What that means is that each year PNG says, there's a certain amount of gas, what we call company use gas, that we use to operate our facilities. In Tumbler Ridge, that's the Tumbler Ridge gas plant. And so, we forecast how much gas the plant will use and how much that gas will cost. And then if the forecast is high or the forecast is low, we pick up the balance through something called a rider. And then if the forecast is high or the forecast is low, we pick up the balance through something called a rider. So in this case, there was a very modest negative rider, which means that we slightly overforecast how much gas we would use in the facility. The next one, RSAM, a revenue stabilization adjustment mechanism. There's a fancy headline for you. That basically says, we know that each year, every year, we're going to have differences in how much load folks use. So this is basically the load forecast variance. Sometimes folks use more, sometimes folks use less. It's volume times price that equals revenue. And so if we have a deficiency, then we need to recover that deficiency through a rider charge. If we have a sufficiency, it means that we can give some back. And the purpose of that revenue stabilization is to take out those peaks and valleys of load being imperfectly forecast. And it smoothes things out so that it's flatter. The next category is a low-carbon, low-carbon charge. That's for the cost of P and G incorporating small volumes of renewable natural gas into its system. That gives you a total delivery charge for 2024 of $12.99. So what's the $909 to the right of that? That's just some simple math so you can do some comparisons. If you assume that the average residential customer in Tumblr Ridge uses about 70 gigajoules a year. If you were to plug it into your calculators, 70 times 1299, you'd get $909 as the estimated cost of the delivery charge components of the bill. If I then compare what happened on an interim basis, 1st of January, 2025, you can see a very modest change in the basic monthly charge. Relatively modest change in the delivery charge. Virtually no change in the company use rider or the low-carbon rider. The big change was in this revenue stabilization adjustment. So what that means is that for 2023 and for 2024, P and G significantly underforecast the load and therefore underforecast the revenue. And so that needs to recover against that underforecast for the 2025 period. That was principally due to some declines in the industrial transport load. We had our large upstream gas provider who operates some downstream facilities took a four-year turnaround as well as a series of curtailments. And that's what principally drove the reduction in load. So comparing the bill, same thing, 70, 70 gigajoules times the total delivery charge. You saw that from 2024 to Jan. 2025, the annual bill went up $909 to $1,039. So where are we now? If we go to the last table, you can see we've restored the basic monthly charge to where it was in 2024. We've actually reduced the delivery charge by about 2%. The company use rider, that's just pennies anyway. The low-carbon rider, that's pennies. And then we've reduced the rate stabilization rider by 10 cents. So as of the 1st of May, that typical annual bill is going to come down to $996 for the delivery charge components. That's a lot of talking. Maybe I'll stop there and see if folks have any questions.
Yeah, we got a couple of questions for you, David. Counsel Nuxana, then Counsel Norbury?
Thank you. I'm just wondering why your interim rate jumped so much just for it to come down slightly again in May? Is that just overcompensating in the thought that these bills would remain higher?
I'm sorry, I'm just having a bit of trouble hearing the question. My apologies.
Your January 1 interim rate is a lot higher. And then it comes down slightly in May. I'm just wondering why that interim rate is so much higher?
Yeah, the big driver is in that RSAM column, that revenue stabilization adjustment. And that was because of the demand variance for the prior revenue requirement period, which was 2023 and 2024. So P and G had an underforecast of load and therefore underforecasted the revenue and needed to recover that margin difference in the next period.
Follow-up?
No, thank you.
Counsel Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Kukalka. Thanks for speaking to us, David. I'm going to ask you a question about the RSAM rider, which I'm sure is a riveting topic for everyone in attendance. I do understand the premise is that, you know, you said multiple times, the load was lower, but the load was actually higher, so we need to make up that cost. Can you describe to us what cost do you incur when the load is higher than what you forecast? I'm just kind of curious about where the need for more funding is. Like you mentioned, maybe virtual pipelines. Yes, what cost is P and G actually incurring, giving us that extra load?
In this category, it's not actually on the cost side of the equation. This one is purely based on revenue. So revenue is the combination of the forecast volume of load for each of the different customer classes multiplied by the regulated charge. And in this instance, we had forecasted the volumes to be higher than they actually were. And so this revenue stabilization adjustment mechanism account picks up those variances. And in this instance, it was short. So it was short on revenue, which means that shortfall in revenue now has to be collected through rates, which are then spread across all of the different customer classes through this rider.
So.
Does that help?
I think so. Can I express my understanding to you? And you can say if I'm right or wrong, but maybe it's oversimplification. But it sounds like your costs were forecasted at a certain amount and the revenue that you brought in didn't meet up to that. So this is what this charge is for? Because, I mean, obviously you have overhead costs to make up for. Is that sort of a generalization that's a little simpler for someone like myself to understand?
Yeah, you know, that's an insightful way to describe it. So the revenues have to match the costs. As a cost of service regulated utility, P and G must recover its costs through rates. And if we underforecast the volume, it means that we've underforecasted the revenue. Therefore, we have a misalignment between revenue and costs that we need to correct in the following period. This is that correction.
Thank you.
Any questions at this point? Okay, you can continue, please, David.
Thank you. So here is some good news coming. So if I start with the first piece of good news, Tumblr Ridge is the only division that is seeing a rate decrease for the 2025, 26, 27 period. Fort St. John and Dawson Creek are seeing an increase in the order of 10-plus percent. I don't have the specific numbers offhand, but it's more, it's double digits. And the P and G West system is seeing a very significant increase due to the very significant work that we've done to restore safe and reliable operations of the pipeline there. So I would suggest that Tumblr Ridge is in a really enviable position compared to the other service areas. But let me talk through what this table shows. I've brought in the same rates from 2024, January 2025, which was that second interim block of numbers. And then May 2025, which I'm putting forward as the revenue requirements. So these first three columns line up exactly with these three tables. But what I wanted to show is that there's another little line item in delivery charges. So let's look at the 2024 column. And you see that I'm showing a delivery charge of 12.855, plus then a company use, which is that amount of gas that the facility is used to operate the Tumblr Ridge plant, to get to what I'm calling the gross delivery charge of 13.276. If I go back into the prior table, you see that lines up with the 13.276 in table one. Similarly, if I go to January 2025, 13.665 lines up with this one. And the 13.037 lines up with the May 1st, 2025. The reason I want to point those numbers out is that as you go into 2026 and 2027, we are forecasting a further decline in the delivery charges, which will result in a further reduction of rates. What's the green highlighted piece? We only have company gas cost forecast a year at a time. So we can't say with certainty what will be in 2026 and 2027. If we were not to be operating the plant, that company use gas should go down. And then the gross delivery charge will be even lower than what we're showing here. The other key piece I wanted to show is, and we had that important discussion around the RSAM or the revenue stabilization adjustment mechanism. You can see that for May 2025, it's sitting at about $1.23, $1.24. But it basically goes away almost entirely for '26 and '27, 5 cents and 4 cents respectively. So it's really just a one-time hit in 2025 to deal with the forecasting variance that we had from '23 and '24. So I show you all of those moving parts. It's a little bit gory, I understand. At the end of the day, folks, you just want to say, what am I going to pay for gas, David? What's my delivery charge? And that's what you see is this bottom line, this total delivery charge. So Jan. 2025 was a 14% increase compared to '24. On May, we're going to take it down 4%. In '26, it's going to go down another 10. In '27, it's going to go down another 2. You're the only service area with rates going down. Every other service area has rates going up.
Counsel Hoffman?
This is my final slide. And I know it's a little bit hard to follow, but with some of the values that we've previously looked at. And apologies, this is right out of the actual application and it's reverse table. It reads from right to left, which is a bit confusing. So if we start in the right-hand column, which is 2025, where this is showing for both the residential customer class and the small commercial customer class for comparison, the changes in the delivery charge, so 26 or 27 cents. You can go back to this prior chart and you can extract the 27 cents by comparing the delivery charge of 1285 for 2024 to the 1260 in May 2025. This chart in the revenue requirement just compares 2024 to May 2025. It skips out that whole January interim piece. The intent is for simplicity, but frankly, I think it actually confuses folks. Anyway, that's part of the regulatory world. So it's showing for residential, for instance, a 2.1% decrease in delivery. This average use per account, I said it was 70. The actual average in Tumblr Ridge is 71.5. I was just using round numbers. So what this says is in 2025, there's a $19 reduction in delivery charge. But this table appears to show an increase related to that RSAM because it's not comparing the RSAM. It's not comparing the RSAM to the interim rate, which is showing a 10-cent reduction. It's showing it to the 2024 number, which was a 22-cent credit to you. So in fact, the difference is 22 cents plus a buck 24. That gives you this buck 46. So that shows a $104 increase with a net 25 increase of $85 compared to 2024. It's a decrease compared to the interim rates, but it's still an overall increase compared to 2024. But then in 2026, those rate reductions kick in. So in fact, the bill goes down by 100 bucks. And it goes down by a further 18 in 2027. All of which is to say, rates are going down in Tumblr Ridge for delivery. And none of that includes the carbon tax savings. So carbon tax savings effective the 1st of April, 2025, with the repeal of the carbon tax legislation provincially and federally, that'll drive straight off the bill. P and G is just a collector of that tax and then remits it to the government. So if we take those same average numbers of 70 GJs a year, at four bucks a GJ, quick math, that's $280 a year for the average residential customer. Round it up to 300 bucks for simplicity. But you're going to see a $300 per residential bill reduction just from carbon tax alone.
All right, well, thank you very much, David, for your presentation. I have a question for you from Counsel Hoffman.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Thank you, David. I'm just wondering why we're so confident that the RSAM is going to go down so significantly and be so stable for 2026 and 2027?
Yeah, we have more confidence there because with the Quintet Mine having restarted, there is significantly more load and significantly more revenue coming in to the Tumblr Ridge division. And so we can use that incremental revenue to help stabilize rates over this three-year period.
That's great. Excellent answer. That's a good one. I appreciate that.
Hello?
It's a separate question.
Go ahead.
I know it's not your department, but just for the people that are listening in, there's nothing showing the actual gigajoule cost from one year compared to the others. Is there any expectations on what that's going to be over the next few years?
As in the price of the natural gas commodity?
Yes, sir.
I don't have the numbers handy.
Oh, fair enough.
Directionally, and I can pull them out of the application and send them to folks if you like. Directionally, you're going to see a reduction, we think, for the balance of 2025. Gas prices are relatively low right now. And then the forecast of the gas prices will tick up in '26 and '27.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough, thank you.
Counselor Nuxana, then Counsel Norbury?
Thank you. Last you were here in council chambers or zoomed into council chambers, we had discussed some critical work. You had outlined at the plant here in Tumblr Ridge with a fairly high price tag. And my understanding is that work has now been put off. Can you explain why we don't need that done? And is it pushed off to a future year or is it just not needed?
Yeah, great question. Thank you. So we had filed for what's called an expenditure authorization application to the B C Utilities Commission. That's what we spoke about in December at the last meeting. We've since withdrawn that application, which means that we have removed those costs from this revenue requirements application. What we have included in this application, though, is the cost of a bypass reconfiguration. And so we are hopeful that we can secure a durable supply of sweet gas from our upstream supplier such that we would no longer need to operate the sour gas processing facilities. And so we have incorporated a much smaller amount of costs related to that bypass reconfiguration and the preservation of the existing plant assets in the event that the composition of gas changes in future. We feel that's going to be the most cost-effective way to ensure safe and reliable supply to the residents of Tumblr Ridge.
Follow-up?
I don't have a follow-up, just a comment that I'm glad to hear because my understanding is a lot of our cost was sweetening that gas so that it can be delivered to homes and businesses. So happy to hear that that work shouldn't be needed now. Thank you.
Counsel Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Kukalka. Great question, Counsel Nuxana. I had it written down as well. Great to hear that we're moving towards the bypass reconfiguration to save our residents that cost. That was definitely something that was heard loud and clear by me. And I'm sure my fellow counselors regarding like fear of costing. So with that question answered, I just want to say thank you for coming and presenting. And I appreciate passing the carbon tax saving along to the consumer. In today's day and age, there's always that fear that corporations would just, you know, try and use that opportunity to add another fee or continue to keep their profits up with that. So thanks for passing that along. Appreciate that.
Any other questions from council?
Walk through and we're happy to remove it.
Any other questions from council? I have a couple, Counsel Nuxana had hit mine about the plant upgrade because I know when you guys were here last, you talked about it, but then you guys were looking into something. So obviously that's come forward and we don't have to spend that $4 million. So obviously, that's come forward, and, and we don't have to spend that $4 million. David, I'm not sure if you're aware, I'm going to say it's probably three weeks ago, maybe it's been a month. But P&amp;G had added an additive into the gas there for leak detection or whatever. And it was a heavier amount than normal that we had lots of people, lots of residents, businesses having the smell throughout the whole community. I believe in one day our fire department responded to 17 different calls. I could be wrong on the number. Are you aware of that?
I am not, but do you happen to know the date? And I can pass it on to my field folks and ask them to confirm what happened.
Yeah, we'll get you, we'll get you the date sent by staff. I think one thing we ask is to make sure we're advised that that's going to happen. I think it really, it really helps, one, our volunteer fire department. But we can get some notification out that, you know, this may happen. I definitely think it helps some residents that, you know, had leaks, minor leaks that didn't make a difference. But because of this extra dye that was put in, or scent that was put in, it really picked them up. So some people had things fixed that normally wouldn't have smelt it. But yeah, the whole community that we, we heard it loud and clear about it. Oh, I have the date. March 8th is one of the days. So I'm not sure exact date that it was installed into the plant or into the processing unit in Tumblr here. And then one other question I have for you, and I know you, you sent the sheets and you got all the numbers there, which is great. Can you explain why residents see such a high delivery, delivery cost compared to usage? I didn't, I don't have any, I mean, I can forward you some examples for sure. But we're seeing them. I get sent them quite regularly from residents, you know, you know, obviously upset about the price of their gas bill. You know, $700, $800, $600. Majority of it was delivery fees.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, it's unfortunately, Mayor, a result of the unique Tumbler Ridge Division that having a plant as well as having a long pipeline. So there's a plant cost, there's a transmission pipeline cost, there's the distribution pipeline cost. And all of those get rolled into the delivery charge, which is why Tumblr delivery rates are higher than Fort St. John and Dawson Creek. In those communities, we can connect directly to sales gas transmission pipelines. We don't have to make the gas or move it through transmission. It's, it's really just a distribution-connected system. Tumbler Ridge does pay less than the West, however. So the, the delivery charges in the West are even higher than Tumbler Ridge and going up significantly, not going down.
Yeah, I mean, and we're aware of that from the December meeting in regards to that. Yeah, and I appreciate the comments because, you know, it's just something that I know I hear. I'm, I'm pretty sure all the councils are hearing it in regards to the cost there and in regards to delivery compared to usage. Now, I know we talked previously, and I know you talked with a previously, previous council as well. When we're seeing all the increases and stuff like that, delivery charges, we talked about this plant possibly having to be upgraded for $4 million. We had that conversation about how do we, how do we link all of us together when it comes to Dawson Creek, Fort St. John, and Tumblr? To me, listening to you today, this is not the time to do that.
Is the question, are we still considering a harmonization of delivery charges across service areas?
Correct.
Let me take that one back to our regulatory folks. I have not heard any recent updates on the timing for that prospective application. I will get back to you.
Okay. When we do that, can we get the information on cost examples? If we do it, it's going to cost more? If we do it, it's going to cost even, you know, it's going to, we're going to save even more? I think that's really, really important for our community, so for our residents for sure. To me, if there's no cost saving, it's going to cost our residents more money to, to do that harmony complex scenario. I don't think it's worth it from, from my side. We don't want to cost our residents more in fuel cost. We want to try and help get the fuel costs down.
Yeah, indeed. There, there's no question that if we were to proceed with a, what we'll call a harmonization of delivery charges across service areas, there would be a significant customer engagement component to that. There's, yeah, so, so we would ensure that you have information to review and comment, Mayor.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
Let me, let me take it back and speak to our regulatory folks and see if that regulatory application is still even on the table.
Okay, and yeah, that'd be good information to hear. All right. Thanks again, David, for, for answering our call about coming forward as a delegation. Great that we hear this firsthand about the decreases in, obviously, from May 1st on for 2025, but even more of a decrease for 26 and 27. It's great to hear that firsthand and, and be right out the window. And hopefully, the regulator, the regulator accepts that. If that changes, can you advise staff like our CAO that they're not accepting it? So we're aware.
Absolutely. What, what I can do is send, as soon as the application is publicly available on the commission website, I'll share the link. And that also includes the regulatory schedule. This will take some time, probably three to six months to move through the written hearing process.
Okay, I appreciate that. Well, thank you very much, and have a great night, David.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Bye for now. Let's figure out how to get out of here. All right, here we go. Bye now.
We're going to move the mic?
Thank you. The next up is Tumbler Ridge Forever Young Society. Glenn Miller, Debbie Robbins, and Lynn Cuberson in attendance to present to council a request for the district to take over the responsibility of cleaning Willow Hall. Please, on up to the delegation table. We can have a third chair if Lynn would like to join. There's not an issue. Just give us a second. Yeah, nope, for sure. Nope. Staff's on it. Okay, just move yours over some there, Debbie.
I can walk around. I can walk.
No, we got it. All right, the floor is yours.
Okay, to, to start off with, you know, I'd like to thank Mayor and Council, you know, for accepting this opportunity to have us speak to this presentation. And if you have about an hour or so, we'll, we'll start it. We'll, we'll do this here as quickly as possible, and we'll go from there. Like, again, we want to thank you, first of all, for allowing us to be the main users of Willow Hall. Now, from the very beginning, there's been approximately six, seven different units there, eh? But since we're the one, the main users, we took up the opportunity to clean it as much as we could. So like, we've seen a lot, a lot of mess there and everything else, so we, we didn't want that. So we started off with having some of our own people and paid them a certain number. And like, that worked out okay for a while. But, you know, just like everything, you know, people that, well, I did it for a year, you know, and that's there. And so we had a couple of that, of employees or members. And from then, when that quickly was wondering what we're going to do. So we hired this person. And I think the only thing we did there was the puzzle there got put together a lot quicker, eh? Because it wasn't that the work was being done, eh? So like, here we go again, eh? So like, we decided that, you know, like, we would have two of them, their coordinators. And like, we would try and have them do the job. Well, I think you might have a copy of their duties. Yes, no, like, it may be a sense. And like, when I finally seen this, eh, and everything, I said, oh, interesting, eh? You know, because if things are a little bit slack sometime or not getting done, it's, it's, it's quite the workload. And what you see there on the, the paper, that didn't include some things like our soup day, potluck, crib tournament, and, what is it? And bingo. So there's these, all these other duties. So if things don't really, everything doesn't get done, eh? It's, it's, it's a great load for them. If you look at the sheet there, that's a great load. So like, I decided that I'd see what I could do. And I was talking to the manager of the, of the community center, you know? And he said, yeah, it could be possible, you know, like, but he said that he can't make that decision. And I'd have to talk to Mr. Tubbs, who would probably come to council, like. So I got ahold of Mr. Tubbs, eh? And he mentioned to me that he had some medical reasons and he wouldn't be able to do it. He said, but if I wanted to go ahead, you know? So we made these arrangements to come and speak to you with the treasurer here and one of the coordinators. And so we would, I had a general idea, you know, like, what the custodians do because, I know you might know me, you might not know. Like, I was one of them over there for about eight years, eh, and everything else. And I know the job that they do, a good job, eh? And I don't think there's ever any complaints, eh, and everything else. And so we decided that, or not, we decided, at the time, I decided that maybe a good deal would be Monday, Wednesday, and a Friday. And we can still do the major thing. If anything major happens, we can still do it. But, you know, that'll take a lot of pressure off the coordinators, eh? And, you know, like, we'll just bring that to council here, you know? And maybe give us a hand with that, thinking of how we can go about this, eh? And if there's any questions, you know, we have our treasurer here or one of the coordinators. And you can ask anything, and we'll see if we can come up with the answer.
Yep, appreciate it. Thanks very much for coming in, first off. It's great to have the opportunity when organizations are using something to come back to council. And to me, let us know how it's going. I'm going to let council ask questions first, and then I have some information, I think.
Sure.
And stuff that, I think things haven't been followed from, from. Okay, so can I ask what manager of the community center you talked to?
What's that again?
Can I ask what, what the manager of the community center you talked to? Who, who was the employee?
Oh, like Dennis, Dennis. You know, like, he said, you know, like, he didn't see a big problem. But he said that it's not a decision that he could make, eh? And he's the one that sent me to see Mr. Tubbs, eh, you know? And Mr. Tubbs sent me to make something there for council.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, Glenn. And, and I appreciate the Forever Young Society, what they're doing over there. But at this point, we actually have a contract with the Light of the Rockies, the Light of the North Rockies. And part of their contract, it states in there about the cleaning. There are certain criteria that they need to meet. So I think one thing is we need to have staff get in contact with the Light of the North Rockies to find out in regards to the contract that this council actually, I believe, extended it, that they're following it. So I do believe in their, and, and, you know, I don't normally ask staff to answer, but we'll have a, we'll have a conversation with staff probably later, an email. But I believe the way I read it in there is like, yes, when you have your crib tournament, obviously, you have to do a light cleanup, take the tables back down that you've put up, or whatever it may be. But my understanding of the contract, the, the contract that I've read is the Light of the North Rockies are supposed to be the, what we're seeing group that does the cleaning, the thorough cleaning. So one, I apologize, you know, and it's too bad this didn't come out sooner to have that conversation. So we can just make sure, and, you know, it's something, it's, to me, it's something that staff needs to reach out and just have that conversation with them and see, you know, maybe they didn't realize it was in the contract. Didn't know. But that is my understanding when I've read it. So I think we've got to do our due diligence when it comes to that and make sure first before we, you know, I understand what your ask is. I mean, I'll leave it up to council. But my, my, my opinion on it right now is we need to get clarity on regards to the person that we have given a contract to, to oversee the building on behalf of the municipality. They've had it from the time previous councils bought the building. They've pretty much had it from that point on. With the concept, obviously, that the Forever Young Society was moved out of the community center over into Willow Hall, knowing that they were going to be the, the main users. But it was even when it came down to minor repairs, you know, like, last year, Let's Talk, we heard about a door. We have some seniors that attend Willow Hall or don't attend Willow Hall for the seniors for Forever Young. Either they don't stay long because they can't open the door to the washroom, or they don't come at all because they can't open the washroom door. That was a huge concern when I heard that. And I apologize. I, I used to be, I used to come to Forever Young all the time. Became mayor and I never come, right? I don't know. I don't have, I, I need to get there. But, you know, and that's, that's bad on me for not attending. That's, that's not, you know, using excuse out of time. But it just, you know, it's not that I forgot about you guys. I think you're very important to our community. But when I heard that at the Let's Talk, to me, there was a disconnect. I'm glad we heard it there because, you know, now, we need to react. You know, we, we need to get that door fixed, it's an automated door coming in. But we need to look at these washrooms. And, you know, and I think that's where, to me, it comes in again, is we should be contacting them. So we should be contacting the leaseholder and saying, hey, we're having issues with this door. You know, maybe it's nonfixable from their side because they only do minor repairs. And then after that, they, they work with staff. I believe it's the contact is the community center. I could be wrong. Maybe they have to contact our CAO. But then we may have had this bathroom door issue fixed a year and a half ago, two years ago. Like, whether it's remove it, do something, it could have been fixed a long time ago. We're obviously on it. We're going to fix that part of it. When it comes to cleaning, I think that we need to, or I would like to see council support the concept of staff getting involved, looking into it, reaching out, just to see where we sit with the Light of the North Rockies. You know, maybe it's too much for them to take on. I don't know. But that's something that, to me, we need to, we have a contract. And I think we need to make sure that we're following the contract that's in place and make sure we reach out first before we start implementing staff in a budget for, for cleaning Willow Hall. Not that it's not important. I'm not going to let this go.
No, I understand.
It's very important. But I'm going to go to the rest of council because there are other questions for you. Counsel Norbury, and then Counsel Julik.
Thank you, Mary Kalka. Thanks, everyone, for coming in. I think this is, we want, I would like these opportunities to hear back from our resident user groups, what's working, what's not working. And like, to me, it's clear that you need some help with the cleaning. I, I agree with Counselor, Mary Kalka, excuse me. Four years of calling him counselor caught up with me. I agree with Mary Kalka. I think just like the steps to take is chat with the Light of the Northern Rockies to see what's happening. And my, my intention there wouldn't be, you know, hold them and you guys figure it out. Like, if there's something has changed that's preventing this. End of the day, we, I want to make sure that you guys have a clean facility. I definitely worked a job where, you know, I'd work with kids all day long and have to clean up at the end of the day. It was the opposite of fun, and it's, it's, you're just tired at the end of the day. You don't want to have the cleaning, right? And at the end of the day, you know, that's what I'm hearing from you. And, and for me, I don't see it as an issue as long as there's staff capacity there. Or if there's not staff capacity, what budget number would we be willing to put towards that? And for myself, I don't know what that is at this point in time, but I definitely want to help support you guys and, and make sure that you guys don't have to bear this burden on yourselves financially. Because, I mean, I see how much you guys charge for soup. You know, two bucks for a bowl of soup, I don't think you're making much money there, right? You know, $10, $50, $50s, right? Like, it's, I know you guys are doing a lot to fundraise over there while keeping it affordable. So, yeah, definitely want to support you guys. And that little money you earn, I'd love to see you guys put towards not having to pay cleaner. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Counsel Julik.
Hey, nice to see y'all. So I guess I just would like to get some clarity from you to make sure that I'm understanding. So when you guys first took over the cleaning, if I understood, Mr. Miller, it was due to the fact that you previously took turns, but the job wasn't getting done quite as good as it could have gotten done. And so then you guys took that on. Is that how I understood it went?
Well, no, at the very beginning, what it was, you know, like, there's a lot of mess, eh, in the place. So like, we just took it a bit, before we get to that point, you know, I didn't really know about the contractor. Like, I, I know that the Light of the Rockies, they're supposed to do all the fixing of things, eh? And if we needed something, eh? But I didn't know that was part of it. We didn't know that was part of it. So like, we just took it upon ourselves and never asked anyone that we would do the cleaning, eh?
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make, get clear on whether or not it was something that you guys had arranged to the leaseholders or if it was just something you guys took on. And it sounds like it's something you took.
We just took it on, eh, you know, because of the, well, you don't want a messy place, eh? And so I gotta tell the kids that I have, eh, you know, we always leave a place, you know, like, just as we find it or better, eh, and everything else. And I have no difference, you know, like, at the, for the Forever Young than when we use it, eh?
And so I would echo Counselor Norbury and Mary Kalka. Thanks for bringing this forward because we can't do anything about it if we don't know about it. So I'm sure, like Mary Kalka said, that Ms. Scottwood's staff will probably follow up to make sure we get on the same page and, and we can help you out with that.
For sure. Counselor DeSau.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just also want to thank you for coming in and bringing this to our attention. Counsel Julik already asked the question I was going to ask in regards to the cleaning. And just to clarify also, it's just for the cleaning of the hall, the kitchen is not involved. Is that correct?
This is true, eh, you know, like, we don't really prevent, we would prepare if they didn't use it. But I've never seen us if someone cleans it up and they're done. But it's, we will take care of that for sure, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there again, I echo what council and the mayor has said. Okay, thank you. Yeah, there again, I echo what council and the mayor has said. So thank you for bringing this forward, and we, you know, we wanna help you.
I just wanted to say that the kitchen is actually our facilities, like, we own everything in there, so we kind of have control of that and, and, you know, make sure the inspections are done and health inspection and all of that. So, so we're kind of more responsible for that. But as far as the rest of the hall, there's other groups using it and using the washrooms and, and trying to get, yeah, seniors to clean up after. Teenagers is not, not the right way to go. Even if they're paid, even if you're paid.
I might add there that...
Nothing against the teenagers.
No, 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 no. Just as Debbie says, I, you know, I make sure the kids, eh, before they leave, eh, you know, like, look around, any piece of paper on the floor or something like that, what about that, eh, they, we leave it in good shape, eh, and we don't even, they're not even allowed in the kitchen.
Yeah, it's, it's not just the teenagers, though, that use the facilities. There's other groups that use the facilities too, so, yeah. We're just one of the groups that use the facilities.
Appreciate that.
The kitchen is ours. We do use the kitchen.
Yep, appreciate that. Any other questions from council? Just gonna make a couple comments. Can't give direction or make decisions during delegation, but at the end of the meeting, there'll be direction given. If you wanna stay, feel free. I have a, I have a concept made up. If it's supported by the elected official council, then it'll move forward. My understanding is anybody that uses that facility is the reason the district bought it was for all groups. And you've made very clear, you totally understand that. But everybody is supposed to tidy up after themselves, whether that's the Junior Rangers, whether that's the Forever Young Society, or the garden, whoever's using the facility is supposed to do light cleanup, you know, whether that's their tables or chairs or whatever they do. But when it comes down to that, I mean, I'll say thorough clean or a good overview clean, it is supposed to be, it's in the lease agreement. So I think we just need to circle back first. At the end, I plan on making a comment to give direction, and just so we can hear back. So I think it's an opportunity now to engage, find out where we're at, maybe why it's not getting done, maybe, maybe it wasn't being done because somebody took it on. Great on you guys that you, you have care and appreciate the, the building that you're, you're using, that you care so much for, that you're doing all the cleaning for, for the other users. But all users are supposed to do a light clean, I guess. Leave the facility the way you found it when you come in, that's my understanding of it. I did attend the Forever Young's lots previously, I need to get back to it. It was always clean in there. I mean, there's no, there's no comment, no, no question about what the, what the seniors were doing within the building at Willow Hall. So we just need to get, we just need to engage and find out where maybe we dropped offline, and then circle back to you folks. And I'll make a promise that we definitely reach out to you. You have to give us a bit of time. We're gonna have to reach out to, to the contract holder, find out what's going on. I mean, Council Norbury kinda mentioned it, you know, is there, is there something that has come up on their side that they were unaware of it? Maybe they're got some concerns, I don't know. But we definitely need to have that engagement with them and dialogue with them, and then we'll reach right back. Staff would probably reach out to you or myself. If you can give us just a bit of time, Glenn.
So, just so that I understand this, so like, is council gonna get ahold of the Light of the Rockies, or you want me to just have a talk to one of them, or how's that?
At the end of the meeting, I'll be mentioning that staff contact them.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, if you wanna stick for that, that's what the, again, we don't make, I don't give direction to staff in a delegation, or we make a decision during delegation. But then in the meeting, I plan on asking if staff can reach out to them, engage with them. We have a new C A O that has never met this organization, and it's an opportunity to have that engagement and find out where we're at. It's so we know, so that we can get back to you guys, and, and she can get back to council, because maybe we need to look at something different.
Yeah.
You know, we're in the middle of a budget. Council Norbury mentioned it, like, what's our staff capacity for when it comes to janitorial? You know, they do a lot of facilities within our municipality already.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And you know that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So we need to look at that. So, you know, I mean, can't tell you to keep doing what you're doing, but if you can keep it tidy for us until we can get to the end of this. And, you know, if you need help, I would suggest reaching out to Ms. Scott. And, you know, if something happens that, you know, you're overwhelmed or something, at this point, until we can get back to you, just reach out to Ms. Scott.
Yeah, yeah. For sure. Well, I wanted to, well, I wanna thank you all, council, council, eh, and everybody else, you know, like, good questions, eh, you know, and we just found out some things that, like, I know personally I didn't know, that they would be, I could have talked to them a long time ago, you know, but we just took it under our understanding that we're gonna clean the place, eh, and everybody else, eh. And as you can see, that the coordinators have a fairly big list there, eh, and everybody else. And like, I mean, my concern are them too, eh, you know, if we can make that a little bit, not necessarily easier, you know, but, I mean, you gotta have a break somewhere along the line, and you, that's a pretty big workload, eh. But, understand, we thank you, and we thank you. Thank you, Zal, eh. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you very much for coming as a delegation. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Take the recommendation, Council Norbury.
All items in the April 7th, 2025 consent agenda be moved for information.
Seconder, Council Dusso, all in favor? Carried. Are there any items that council like to bring forward, items for discussion? Before I go to Council Norbury, I'd like to bring up 7.2 for discussion. Seconder, Council Norbury, all in favor? Carried. I don't have a whole bunch to say besides, I appreciate the resident for reaching out. I think it's a great opportunity to have some dialogue, especially with the looks of a new resident moving to the community and is looking out in regards to, you know, maybe something that we could use within our community. At this point, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that staff reaches out to the letter writer and advise them that the municipality has $500,000 in the budget, awaiting for grants or other for the spray park. So we've already put 500,000. I think it's, it's a great opportunity for staff to reach out, make sure that residents are aware that we have money put in the budget. Seconder, Council Norbury, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Any other items council like to bring forward? And I apologize, I probably would assume most council wanted that one. I wanted to take that one. Council Norbury.
Wow. The oppressive mayoral privilege rears its ugly head, eh. You get a couple of those. I'd like to bring up 7.3 for discussion, please.
Seconder, Council Dusso, all in favor? Carried. Council Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Kaka. I'm gonna read the recommendation that the District of Tumbler Ridge support the application to the Northern Development Initiative Trust for the Tumbler Ridge Riders. Tumbler Ridge Ridge Riders, Somerville Association for the FMX Freestyle Show 2025.
Seconder, Council Julik, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Any other items council like to bring forward? Council Julik.
7.4.
Discussion, seconder, Councilor Nuxana, all in favor? Carried. Council Julik.
Mostly, I just, because it looks like they're looking for advocacy. It doesn't look like they're asking for any letter or anything. I didn't see anything in there that I wouldn't wanna support, and I particularly appreciated the psychiatric care facility when I was able to go to the mental health this fall. They talked quite at length about it. It was a pullout session, and I thought they had an amazing amount of information, and it definitely makes sense. So, super excited to see the stuff for the provincial funding for the public libraries. Sounds like they have just as good, like, a need within their community for the public library as well. So, yeah. So anyways, yeah, I just wanna say that yes, we'll support it. I guess I didn't really need to bring it forward because there's no real action, other than to say, hey, thanks, Prince George.
Yeah, so I think this is up to each individual. Whoever attends N C L J, this is a resolution on the floor. To me, I don't disagree with you, I can talk personally. I think all the resolutions that they put forward, I mean, to me, we need, make total sense. It's up to each individual, if they, whoever's attending N C L J. If you're in favor, I think they're just giving us a heads up, just like the P R D, except for, P R D was looking for some support letters, just to kind of strengthen it. These guys are just talking about whoever's attending the N C L G A. If, here's a heads up that these are the resolutions we're putting forward. If you feel like it, please support us. So, then again, I agree with you, with the, all the ones they put in, I think it makes sense. Council Nuxana.
7.5 for discussion.
Seconder, Council Julik, all in favor? Carried. Council Nuxana.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that this Health Expo is coming to Dawson and encourage folks to get out and take it in.
Any other discussion? Council Julik.
I also know that there's some folks from Tumblr heading there for a booth, and so, yeah, it'll be kind of cool to see everybody that's there, and thanks for bringing it forward.
Any other discussion? I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that council authorizes travel expenses for any councilor wishing to attend the South Peace Health Expo 2025. Seconder, Council Norbury, discussion. Council Julik.
I've already agreed to go as a volunteer, so, and I know that the truck is being signed out. We do have a staff member already going, so, just to give you a heads up on that.
Yep, no problem. The truck has six seats in it.
Yes, no.
Right, has six seats.
I just meant that the seat, that it was...
Yep, and there's other vehicles available. It just makes sure that...
That's where I'm going. I'm with that one.
It just makes it available, so if people wanna go as an elected official, they have no opportunity, because now we're gonna expense it.
Perfect.
Okay, can I call the question? All in favor? Carried. Any other items council like to bring forward? Council Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Kaka. 7.6 for discussion, please.
Seconder, Council, let me second it first. I'm confused now. Seconder, Council Dusso. Council Nuxana.
Thank you. I would like to declare conflict as my husband's on the executive of the W N S.
Okay. Turn off your mic.
Thank you, Mayor Kaka. On motion that the District of Tumbler Ridge supports the application to the Northern Development Initiative Trust from the Wolverine Nordic and Mountain Society for the 2025 Emperor's Challenge.
Seconder, Council Hoffman, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Okay, are there any other items that council would like to bring forward for discussion? Okay.
Can I bring 7.11 forward, please?
Yep, discussion, I'll second it. Go ahead, Council Dusso.
Yes, I think I'm glad to see this come forward and that they are going to be doing their yearly maintenance. I'm sure there will be posters and something on our website to inform people of that going on when it starts for the C N rail vegetation.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? Okay, are there any other items before I move on? Okay, moving on to bylaws. Municipal Ticket Information Amendment, bylaw number 734-2025 for adoption. Report dated April 7th, 2025, from the Director of Technical Services, Fire Chief, regarding Municipal Ticket Information Amendment, bylaw number 734-2025 for adoption. Recommendation, please. Council Nuxana.
The council adopts the District of Tumbler Ridge Municipal Ticket Information Amendment bylaw number 734-2025.
Seconder, Council Dusso. Any discussion from council? There's eyes on the staff. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Okay, zoning bylaw number 747, 2025, second and third reading. Report dated April 7th, 2025, from the Director of Corporate Services, regarding zoning bylaw number 747, 2025, second and third reading. Before we get to the readings, Ms. Scott, we'll make the second reading, we can make changes before the third reading.
That's correct.
Thank you. Council Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Kaka. I was actually, I was hoping to, motion to defer this second and third readings, as we did receive, I think, a good series of questions from a resident. A lot of things in here make a lot of sense to me, but I would like, myself, a chance to digest some of the proposed changes by this resident. So I'd like to motion that we defer second and third readings.
Okay, take a second early deferral. Council Julik, discussion. Council Julik.
I agree. There's some stuff that I would also like to discuss and, and take a good look at, at the comments that received. I'm just wondering, will we approach it in a council meeting? Will we approach it in another meeting? Like, like, will we sit it up? I guess I'm like, what, I'm wondering what it will look like.
Yep. I mean, I can ask staff, but my thoughts are, when we defer this, we're just gonna bring it to the next regular meeting of council. It gives staff, or staff, sorry, council an opportunity to dialogue what they've heard. If, if there needs to be some debate and some changes made, those motions can be put out there, and it can be changed within the documentation. I do, I have a change that I wanted to put on the floor, put on the floor for debate, but Ms. Scott, is that not what we would do?
Yes, it would come to a regular meeting.
Council Julik, hang on a second.
I just wondered, if we put it on a regular meeting, if that would fill up the agenda? Like, I'm not saying let's go have another special meeting. I just wonder if we have more of an informal, like, a P P C that we can toss it around? I don't know. Like, I'm just asking you to see.
Yeah, I think it'll come forward. We've, we've hammered this out, and I mean, obviously, we've heard in regards to the public hearing. I, I think that the letter that was, the written submission that was, that was received should be emailed to council, or at least a copy. Council can dialogue it, and to me, it's a regular meeting, so that if there's changes that council as a whole figures those changes should be made, they be made, and we can start, we can get it in the readings. And in that way, this process, if not, instead of starting this, I believe in 2022, we're gonna keep, continue doing this if we put it out P and P. To me, there may be some slight changes, which is, that's why we, we're gonna make changes, we do it before the third reading. Because once you do the third reading, then you have to bring it back. So that's why I think if it's at a regular meeting, we can talk about the changes. If they need to be made, they can be made. Ms. Scott, just wanna confirm that.
Yeah, I just wanna remind council, though, too, that at the, now that the public hearing is closed, you cannot continue to get more public feedback on it, that that is contrary to the public hearing. So you can't get any more public feedback on it. But yes, it would come to a regular meeting, and there would be a staff report that would be repaired, prepared for council with the, some of the information that was brought forward.
Thank you. Council Hoffman and then Council Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor. I am fully supportive of the motion on the floor. I think this is exactly what we do the public forums for, and I, whether I agree with any of these or not is not the point. I think we should discuss them, and I intend to support it.
Thank you. Council Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Kaka. The reason why I asked for a deferral, and maybe I'm the slowest of the group, but, you know, as, as, as the comments were read out, I was writing down as quickly as I could, and, you know, Ms. Alves has great dictation. At the same time, I was hoping that we could see something written down, so that, you know, we can read it at our own pace, we can digest it better. I do better digesting information when I can read it versus just hearing it. So that's why I asked for a deferral. Yeah, because there's some great, great comments. Thanks.
Yeah. No, and I do support, like I said, I had a, something I wanted to put on the floor for council, for debate. At this point, I am gonna make a comment, and it was in regards to the public hearing question that came up. And those questions there were, I believe, the response of the written submission. So within the, within our zoning bylaw right now, we have certain things, bread and breakfasts, what's the short stay thing? I don't know what it's called, Airbnbs, short-term rentals. We have all that there now. I believe this concerned resident is just saying, like, can we look at it differently? So that right now, it's within our zoning that we allow that. So I know the question from the resident was, you know, like, so if I leave for a month, I can't rent my house? Right now, you can. It's in our zoning as you can as well. But I think this resident just has brought forward some questions that, you know, I think we need to see it in written form. Council Norbury, I'm the same as you. I wanna, you know, I wanna bother to read them, because they're not all in the same section of the, of the bylaw, just to better get dialogue, just to understand exactly what it, so, yeah, be supporting it. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, and this'll just come back to the next regular meeting of council. And council's good with that? So that's a couple, a couple weeks from now?
Works for staff.
Yep. Well, it works for staff, because it's already here. It's pretty easy. Okay, can I call the question? All in favor? Carried. Okay, 8.3, the 2024-2028 Financial Plan Amendment, bylaw number 748-2025. Report dated April 7th, 2025, from the Chief Financial Officer, regarding amendment to the 2024-2028 Five-Year Financial Plan. Recommendation, Council Nuxana.
The council adopts the District of Tumbler Ridge 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Amendment bylaw number 748-2025.
Seconder, I'll second it. Discussion, Council Nuxana.
Thank you. I just wanna clarify that this is a 2024... Thank you. I just want to clarify that this is a twenty twenty five amendment bylaw. I, I read that on purpose.
Yeah. Ms. Scott, I just, I know, I had the same question. I just, I was wanting to. Just want to confirm, this is for the, it's the seven forty eight, twenty twenty five amendment, but it's for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty eight Financial Plan because of the amendments that we approved last meeting. Is that correct?
Is, is the question whether or not it should be a two thousand twenty five bylaw? There was an update to your agendas to reflect that, that it is a two thousand twenty five bylaw. Yes.
Yeah, I have so much paperwork on my desk. So that, answer your question, Counselor Noxana?
I was just clarifying because.
Okay. Okay, any discussion from council? Counselor Hoffman?
Not the best spot for this, but I just want to put it out there. Just looking at the budgetings and actuals, I am concerned that the inaccuracies are going to get worse, not better, over the coming years. And I don't have a specific proposal. I'm not making a motion right now, but my original thought was something that if we, just as a policy, if we get a quote that we budget twenty percent above quote, or just something to, to cover these budgetary discrepancies over the coming years. I'm sure everybody's aware of the sort of general world that we are starting to live in right now. And I'm worried that this gets compounded as you're doing five-year plans that we're getting farther and farther off some of our targets. So just throwing it out there, not looking for any changes right now, but just, just putting it in, and everybody's here.
Yeah, so I'll make a comment. I think we've seen some of this. So some of this is because staff are learning as, as they go. I would say that in a light way, and the reason I say that is we've had some turnover at the municipality, C A O, CFO, some new directors. So, you know, what's happened here is, is obviously some more training is involved, is needed. Some more discussion is needed with our, with the C A O and her, and the staff, just so they, they understand that when they, when they get their budget, their budget at thirty-two thousand dollars, if it goes over, before they go and finish that or do that, they need to come back to council to get that extra money. So if you look at item, item two, glycol for the boiler system, zero budget, fifty-seven thousand dollars was spent, fifty-eight thousand dollars. It was, they had money within their budget. This was explained at our last meeting. There was money within their budget. Just a training. They didn't realize that because it's, they had money here, they can't just spend it over here. So the, so we seen that last week in regards to the sander trailer before, behind the trackless machine. We pre-approved the budget and staff had sent a reporting last week that, hey, listen, we budgeted this amount. I've got this much money in my savings from it because I've saved some money. I looked at this thing. I've seen it in another community. Would be great for our municipality, ask for permission to take this extra dollars that he's not spending on the trackless to be able to buy this other piece of equipment. So I think Ms. Scott and, and her staff are slowly getting through this. And this is why we'd seen this. It was just something that was missed. Will we, will we see this in, in twenty twenty six? Yes, we probably have a couple. But I don't think we'll see a list like this. Counselor Hoffman, I, I think that's what staff is working very hard at. It was just some missteps and, 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 you know, now that they have caught those things, and it wasn't as plain as day as some of this stuff. Some of this stuff was dug out, and, and I think if staff moves forward, and I mean, if Ms. Scott wants to speak out letter, but you know, I just, we had a good dialogue at our last meeting about it, and I think what this does is, you know, it's a training. It, it's a learning, and, and we'll see less and less of this. It's tough to take sometimes. We, we had a really good discussion about it at our last meeting. But that's why we see it. So it wasn't that we budgeted a certain amount, or staff budget came in with a budget, and it went over because costs went up. You know, maybe it did on that aspect, but some of it wasn't even budgeted for, but they had dollars left in their, in their, in their department funds. Instead of coming and asking council as the elected officials, they just know they needed this, so they went and got it. But Ms. Scott, I'm not sure if you wanted to chime in there, if you're okay the way I answered it.
Yeah, I can also just provide a little bit of additional information that, for the capital projects that were brought forward for two thousand twenty five, depending on the project and the total cost of the project, staff did build in some contingencies. Sometimes the contingencies might have been ten percent, twenty percent, up to forty percent in some, depending on the level of the project. So we are relatively satisfied that we have built in the necessary contingency to try and prevent these overages.
Counsel Hoffman?
No, just, that's great. I appreciate both your explanations and I'm largely thinking that we're putting it on ourselves more than we're really putting it on staff, that when we, that we issue a budget, that we take a contingency more into it, and if, if it's there at twenty percent and we're happy, we're happy. But I just, I see this, I appreciate what your statement was, but depending on what, and the behavior might change, but the need for the funds may not. And that's, that's what I was getting at.
No, appreciate it. I just want to make sure that you were happy and clear, like, I just want to make sure it was clear. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. I think Ms. Scott kind of brought up my point, but one last, last counsel, we were brought up, like, you know, estimates and how, how they're brought forward. There's a time when we would see class D estimates, which is a fifty percent overage, and, and I would prefer to see staff come as close as possible, and I'm fine with seeing overages. Yeah, I mean, I know myself, I saw some of these, like, oh, that's, that's, that's fifty percent over, that's, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, I would rather see, you know, lower cost estimates and then come back to council and we'll, we approve it, right? Because some of these projects, we may be taxing on, on that cost, right? A lot of these we aren't because they're, you know, P R A funded or whatever, but, you know, whenever, whenever we have those things, I'd rather have a, you know, as close as we can, less use of that over, over estimate of, of overages, like those higher class estimates, because, yeah, I'd hate to see us put aside money that we don't need. Thanks.
Okay. Any more discussion? Can I call the question? All in favor? Carrie. New business, nine point one, N C L G A twenty twenty five conference, report dated April seventh, twenty twenty five, from the Executive Assistant to C A O regarding the N C L G A twenty twenty five conference. Recommendation, I think before we make a recommendation, if we can get who's attending so that we're not making ten of these. Counselor Dusso, plan attending?
Yes, I will attend.
Counselor Gillick?
I'd like to. I'm unable to, though.
Okay. Counselor Norbury?
Negative.
Counselor Noxana?
Yep, I'll attend.
Counselor Hoffman?
Not available.
Okay. I don't want to put my name down yet. I'm a maybe, so I'm just going to, if it can just hold on. I know we're looking for travel expenses. If we need to put my name there for now, it doesn't mean that we have to spend them. And I know we have hotels if we don't have to council it yet. I'm just waiting for another schedule to come out. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. Motion that we send Counselor Dusso, Counselor Noxana, and Mary Kalka to N C L G A and cover all expenses coming from the council travel budget.
Thank you. Secondar, Counselor Gillick. Discussion. Just so council's aware, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Counsel Hoffman?
Just a general question. Will our seventh member be sworn in by before that? And that's why I was saying that at least I would amend to add a potential fourth counselor.
Yeah, and that's what I was just going to make a comment about, that we do have a, we do have a room already pre-booked. We did that after the, when we knew there was a by-election, that staff had booked a room. We can always bring it back if, once the person, once the individual is elected and sworn into council and they want to attend, we can just make that decision then and just approve it at the next available meeting. My understanding is staff has not booked that seat for the conference. So there's a conference fee plus hotels, so hotels we can cancel right up to twenty-four hours beforehand. When, with the N C L G, we, we have, I think we're just about past the cancellation part of it. So we're going to hold off on that, and if the individual would like to participate, we should be able to get them in. Correct, Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure, just want to make sure I'm not giving the wrong information, but I mean, we do have that dialogue, but. Ms. Scott, do we know what we can cancel up to on the N C L G for, for the attendance at the conference?
I do not know that. Off the top of my head, I can look into that.
Okay. And the only reason I ask that question before we vote on this is, is if I think I'm still a maybe, I'm going to have them cancel mine, and I can always add later. I don't want to see a cost to municipality. Okay, I'm going to call it question. All in favor? Carrie. Healthcare Task Force Committee Recommendation, Doctor Recruitment Initiatives, report dated April seventh, twenty twenty five, from the Executive Assistant to C A O regarding Healthcare Task Force Committee Recommendations, Doctor Recruitment Initiatives. Recommendation, please. Counselor Noxana?
The council approved ten thousand dollars for healthcare professional recruitment initiatives.
Secondar, Counselor Norbury? Discussion. Counselor Gillick?
I appreciate the change to healthcare professionals. And so I guess, just to get some clarification, is, so what would we use it for? I know previously what I understood, the ten thousand dollar budget that was attached to this, the task force, was for the lunch meetings because the, they would provide lunch for the folks that were coming in and then for a staff member that was contracted to come in and take notes and stuff. So that's what I understood the other ten thousand to be previously in place for. My, where I'm, I'm looking at is, so we've got seventeen five already out of our, our recruitment initiatives, and I'd like to thank staff for, they like broke it down really good for us here. So this is only healthcare professionals, and so my concern rides with, we have six thousand dollars already for the docs and dynos, which is great, and that's a really big recruiting initiative that they put on. And then we also have the cost for the health week that we, like, so when we put everything together for the health week at the clinic, or sorry, at the community center. And where, where I'm coming from is we've got, we, we struggle for E C E staff. We struggle for other professional staff in town. I was in the pharmacy today and they've been looking for a pharmacist, pharmacist for over two years. So I wonder if we're going to allocate funds, if we could allocate them more specifically for professional pieces versus health? I, I just think that we could do it that way. And the other thing is, is when we do it for healthcare professionals, I would say, what I remember from when I was on the task force, nurses are unionized, and so then there's some different, maybe some steps that would have to be taken before we could do some certain things. Not that that can't be done, it's just to be aware of that when we talk about the fund. So just some clarity versus what we used to have to what the idea is to using this for. As it is, stands right now, I, I would, I wouldn't want to support it until we had some more clarity on it and, and discussed what that looks like for the other professional positions in town that we struggle to get. Just in all fairness to those areas.
Yeah, and just before I go to Counselor Noxana, just want some clarity. The contractor that worked on the health task force was covered by admin. It was by admin. So it was under administration. It was not under this ten thousand. The, yeah, the ten thousand dollars was, obviously, there was a lunch because it was during the doctor's lunches, but it actually also covered the dinner for the doctors. That we used to do before COVID. So we used to take the medical, shouldn't say doctors, took the medical professionals out for dinner. That was one of the things that was included within that budget. The other thing that was included within that budget is when we had a, a possible, well, a doctor come in to have a, look at our community, so a prospective doctor coming in, Daphne would reach out, so we would wine and dine that doctor. We would, you know, line up hikes, maybe a riverboat trip, a helicopter trip, take that doctor for lunch, maybe with a couple of the other doctors, so that he was around his own peers. So that's where that budget was, was established because we knew how much we are, we're hurting back then for medical professionals, which I don't believe it has changed a whole bunch, even though it got, it was low, it got really good, and I believe we are starting to hit the bubble. We're starting to come down the other side of it again, so. Counselor Noxana, then Counselor Norbury?
Thank you. I specifically said healthcare professionals on purpose because I know we do struggle for nurses and x-ray techs and all the things. Pharmacy is a bit different because it works out of a business here in town. We'd have to look into how we can do that without breaking the charter. We will be short doctors soon, is my understanding, and actively recruiting as well as nurses. This is specifically for recruitment initiatives, not looking to host lunches while we have our meetings. If we don't see a value, or if we see a value in that, we can come back and ask for that. This is specifically to showcase our community as amazing place to live, that we know it is when people are coming in to look at it, or if someone is moving here, that we can welcome them in the way we know that Tumbler Ridge can welcome individuals. It's been shown to work in other communities that personalizing welcomes for these really highly trained, sought-after professionals makes them see the value in our community and feel more at home and settle in a little bit faster. And that is specific for healthcare professionals. Just a question back about other professionals. Are you advocating that we entice education workers here to Tumbler Ridge?
Counselor Gillick?
I believe I would be in conflict to answer that question. I, when I talk about other professionals, I'm talking about pharmacists. I'm talking about E C E workers and stuff like that. Like, I'm just saying that med, healthcare workers are not the only place where we struggle. And so that, that was all I was meaning. I, yeah, because I know that education is a whole other animal. It's just, yeah, so.
Okay. Counselor Noxana?
Oh, yep. So this specific is for healthcare professionals in a way that we could do this, not, of course, breaking the charter with, with enticing employees to a business and not breaking any union rules, of course.
Thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. You know, Counselor Gillick brings up one of the issues I think we have, we face in our community that's attracting, attracting professionals. Just because we haven't helped other groups that need, that we are underserved by, I don't think we should stop us from starting from one and work our way down. Like, I am, I'm in full support of, of assisting these other professionals that we need in our community to make our community whole. So, you know, that being said, I sit on a recruitment and retention committee based out of Dawson Creek, and they went through a great exercise of interviewing doctors. They did exit interviews of doctors and other medical professionals about what, what key things they need to see to be attracted to a community and to stay in a community. One of the key messages that came through that, those exercises was integration into a community. Now, by, I've been a part of some of these dinners and tours of the community. What it looks like is we usually have a couple of members of council who are available. Our, our C A O was at, at them both times. You know, we also had members of the public, and we'd find out what they liked to do. So I remember one doctor, he came in, we sat down, had a great dinner, and we were able to talk about our community, build a bond with them. So then they had a friendly face. Remember, Tumbler Ridge is that person. Or that person's there that I would look forward to, and let's be honest, as elected officials, a lot of us, the reason we're here is that we have a passion for our community and we can speak to it well to others. Now, back to that individual. We took him out to dinner. We had a great, we had a great conversation, and we took him on a tour to the, to the museum because, you know, it's, he mentioned that he was interested in those things. So these sorts of things can and will move the needle and put us ahead of, let's be honest, the competition. I, I don't want to be in competition with other communities, but at the end of the day, that's what we're asked to do by our residents because they need healthcare. And this is a way that will get us there. When it comes to union positions, it's a tough one. We'll have to work on how that, how we can do that. I know when we've talked about the ambassador program, we couldn't give direct monetary funds to the individuals because it would, it just creates complications, creates union difficulties. But through our past program, we are able to offer them a benefit that does not affect the, the issue of will the union allow it or not. So I'm sure that we can come up with a creative way on how to do that. We'll navigate that. We had this, at the task force, we have Northern Health Representative to assist us in navigating those issues. And we'll make sure that we can not bring a conflict of their union monetary, how much they make. We definitely don't want them to pay taxes on anything they do, and we'll be sure to do that. But again, it's just another tool for us to attract these professionals. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hoffman and then Counselor Gillick?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the explanations that Counselor Noxana and Counselor Norbury gave. It's actually very helpful, helpful for me on this. The aspect I'm having more trouble with is our discretionary, but it is quite limited, and we have a whole bunch of other stuff coming up. And when I'm looking at this request in this format, I have no idea, like, how many wine and dines is ten thousand for? Like, how many professionals going through? That, it's not going to be the same answer every time. I, I get that, but to my mind, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even mind funding this out of sort of a general fund instead of this discretionary. I wouldn't even mind funding this out of sort of a general fund, instead of this discretionary fund next year or going forward. I get we're already at budget right now, so this is a temporary measure. But if we can do this in a smaller scale and collect that sort of data, this is something I can see myself very much supporting, both for medical professionals and broadening as a direct, I can tell somebody, if we spend $500 on a group of two or three, we have a 25% more likelihood that we recruit these sorts of people, and therefore, we can spend X amount a year and know that we're gonna get a few more people that we wouldn't have gotten. Like, I think this could be a really useful program in the foreseeable future. And I guess, let me ask it in a question form. If we did 5,000 for, like, right now, and we left it open that we might add more later on in the year, if there's still discretionary funds available, is that something that would work, or would that handicap you going forward?
Counselor Knoxana, I don't say that on the committee.
I would say that's something you'd have to motion to amend, and see if you had support.
Okay, that, fair enough, wasn't the question, but that's fair enough. So I'm gonna leave it as it is right now, and allow it, but I may reserve putting forward a new motion, if the motion as is is defeated, is where I'm gonna leave it. Thank you.
Thank you. I got Counselor Gillick, and then myself.
Absolutely agree with everything that's been said. I think that it's a good idea, I think that we always want to make sure that our healthcare is supported. Where I get a bit of a hiccup with is, we've supported the $6,000, that is, doctors bring in residents, and they sell the community to them with that $6,000. And it's a whole weekend, and council is invited to help with that. We do VIP passes. I don't know how many we give out of them a year. I also know that that is greatly appreciated. And I'm gonna say, all two people that I've talked to, like, I know in a group of things, I just know of somebody who came from, out of the community and said it was the best thing ever, like, it was one of the things, and then when Counselor Norbury put together the welcoming packages, it was the first and only time that had ever happened for them. So I absolutely agree that these things work. I would like to be able to track it somehow, and I don't know what that looks like right now. I'd like to know how many VIP passes we give out every year. There is a value to that, I know there's not a cost to it, there's a value to it, and that's been a really big promoter of our community. I go with Counselor Hoffman on the part about, okay, let's see what this looks like. And so my question is, is who decides what happens with the $10,000? Like, because then that number's there, and maybe you have an answer for that, and maybe you don't, because from what I understand, there was a definite use of it last time, and so what does that look like? And do we need to make sure that we have that written down when we add it to the budget or take it out of council initiatives? I'm not saying I don't support this, I'm just feeling like we need to have some more tracking data before we make the final decision.
Yeah, so my understanding of this, if it gets supporting, it's put through, it's not $10,000 for two councils to go spend money on that. It would be when they, we know way in ahead with Daphne, who is the doctor recruiter, when they're coming, the motions will come before council, this is what we're looking at doing. Who's available, because we want to make sure that we have, we don't need seven elected officials at the museum, but we definitely need to have a presence. And we need to make sure things are set up, and to me, that's the task force is for, is to reach out to the museum, whether that's Dr. Helm, or that Nordic Mountain Society in regards to doing some hikes, and stuff like that, make sure that that's their job, is that, that's what, to me, that it is. There's no monetary for them to do that. When it comes to dinners, they would know in advance it would come before council, is my understanding. When we talk about VIPs and let's get a number, I believe that was in a report, I can't remember, just, within budget anyways, there's a report on how many passes went to certain groups, and stuff like, I can't remember the numbers, can't remember the report, I'm positive I've seen it. The other thing is, we keep talking about this budget, out of council's budget, again, this was a different line item, and I'm suggesting that we are not finalized our budget. I suggest this actually goes as a line item for healthcare recruitment initiatives, so that is not of the council budget. I mean, I'm well aware, Miss Scott, maybe you have the number in your head, but I'm gonna guess it's $23,000 for the staff Christmas party that the mayor and council put on, somewhere in there, I can't remember, maybe it's not that high. Do you know the number?
I believe council approved up to $12,000.
Thank you, couldn't remember. So, if we add that into this, and stuff like that, and then, you know, the other things are, like, you know, when we meet with First Nations, I mean, we all seen it when we went to Smoberly Days, Pembican Days, it is nice to take something to share with all. I learned that loud and clear on my first time there as the mayor, nothing that was ever passed on to me previously, so I went there empty-handed at Pembican Days, and it was very well explained to me probably about every 10 minutes of the day I was there, on how this worked. So I was, it was loud and clear, and I think, so, when I look at that, I mean, obviously, I mean, we need to make sure we attend, if somebody attends Pembican Days, and then Smoberly Days, so there's some funds there. So to me, I know, I wrote it down, and Counselor Hoffman had mentioned it, to me, we should be putting this as a line item in the budget for 2025, there's still time, I see staff on Zoom, Ms. Scott's here, but I mean, that's, I don't think that's out of the realm to add $10,000 under healthcare recruitment initiatives within our budget. Is it?
At this point, it's just additional work for the CFO to make those additional changes that she's been working on with the budget. So, does that mean that she would be able to bring something forward now for the April 16th meeting? Maybe not.
Can we find that out? Like, it's, I don't want to hold up budget, but the same aspect, is it just easier to add $10,000 to the council budget? Like, I'm not sure how that looks. Like, I understand that we're trying to make a timeline, so we get this through, and we have till May 15 to whatever, I know we don't want to hold that timeline, I understand that, but I'll be honest, to me, the whole extension of budget has not always been from the elected official side, has not. So that's why I ask that, would it still, would it affect the timeline?
So, I know that the Director of Finance has been working on that to try and prepare a report for council for the April 16th meeting, and because she's online, I will ask if she can provide council with an idea of how that would affect her ability to prepare that for council to consider on April 16th, if we wanted to add an additional $10,000.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to say I'm currently trying to reconcile and make sure that, bring all the budget together, it's not normally an easy task, but if you're looking at one line that's for $10,000 and just one adjustment, that can be accommodated potentially, you can make note of it, put it in there. However, if there's a bunch of changes that are coming forward, that can set me back up to two days.
And I appreciate staff's comments, I mean, I don't know, I know for myself, I'm not looking at a whole bunch of changes to the budget, it's been a long process, definitely a long process for staff, probably some long hours, but I just look at this, this used to be in there and stuff, and I don't think we had to do so much recruitment earlier. I mean, like I said, we did the old peak, we're up here, but I think I've heard it loud and clear, I believe the health task force has heard it loud and clear, we are gonna be starting to slide down the other side when it comes to doctors, and I think we're gonna see, I know I haven't connected with Daphne yet, but we've reached out through emails, but just so I can have some dialogue to make sure we're being connected, so we have a heads up. What we are seeing, I believe it's public knowledge, we're losing doctors. So, we need to be on this. Like, if we know that, it is now time to go to work again. That's why that health task force was initiated, and that's why that budget was given, and I honestly believe we might have peaked, but maybe we should have, I don't know, it's hard to advocate when you're full, but we're not gonna be full, so I think we need to make sure there's some funds there. To me, and I, you know, I feel for staff, as we keep adding or changing, but I just think it's nicer to be able to not hit council's budget when it comes to this, than it's actually under the health task force where it was, and now, I'll be honest, I don't know if it was still under the council budget, but it was just itemized as the health task force, I'm not sure of that, I'll be honest, but it was there previously, and I think it should be go back. I got Counselor Knoxana, then Counselor Gillick.
Thank you, I just want to clarify that the motion's just asking for an approval of the $10,000, we haven't specified where in the budget, so, hearing staff loud and clear that if we only make this one small change, it should be able to be accommodated.
Yep, thank you for that. Counselor Gillick.
I have a question about, will this, just to be clear, if we put it on another line item, it will increase taxation?
Ms. Scott.
I don't have the answer for that, so I will ask the Director of Finance if she can give council any idea how that may affect taxation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. If you're adding this as an additional and not reducing another line, yes, that will be an increased taxation.
Thank you.
And the other question then, as we talk about losing doctors, because we were fully at four before I left the healthcare task force, could we also have retention? Like, could we also have it so that it is, could I make an amendment that says that council approves $10,000 for healthcare professional recruitment and retention incentives? Initiatives?
Yep. Second round of the amendment, Counselor Knoxana, discussion on the amendment. Okay, gonna call the question on the amendment, all in favor? Carried. Okay, discussion on the amended motion now. Counselor Gillick.
So do we need to clarify where we want this in, or is this just gonna happen because we've had the conversation during the thing, we can leave the motion as is? Okay.
No, we'll do this motion, then we'll give direction where we want it. And I just don't want to confuse it to you, and then we can have that debate where it comes, goes to or not goes to. That's my flaw, taught on that one. Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'm gonna call the question, all in favor? Carried. Okay, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that the health task force, doctor recruitment and retention initiatives, $10,000 budget is a line item within the budget. Counselor Hoffman, discussion. I'm assuming you were right? Yeah, perfect, okay. Counselor Gillick.
So, if we put it as a line item, would this be something that we just carry forward then? Like, because it sounds like it used to be there, and it got lost somewhere, so would this be something, do we need to make a motion to confirm that this would be something ongoing, and then we would have, you know, like when we did our budget, and we had the surplus, and we just said it, you know, do you get where I'm going?
Yep, stop and bring it back. Here, it was just like when we went through our budget with staff, staff did a great job, here's what you're, here's what you budgeted in 2023 and 2024, here's what you're actual, you're budgeting $150,000, but you're spending 60 grand. Good idea is to drop it to 80, that's how we were able to recover such a huge percent from council's budget, is because we previously budgeted it so high, I think it was easy to drop some of those numbers. Counselor Gillick.
Yeah, perfect, that was my hope and intent of it all, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Counselor Knoxana.
Thank you, yeah, I would like to see this come back before us, maybe in a year, or in next budget season, to see if we've utilized it, if we see value in it, or if we need to go a completely different direction.
Ms. Scott, it'd be tracked, is that correct? Like, if it's a line item, it'll be an actual on what we budgeted, and then what we actually spent in 2025, is that not correct, just like previously?
Yes, staff can keep track of how much of that allocated $10,000 was spent, but I mean, staff wouldn't be the ones that were tracking the actual benefit that we saw within the community.
No, and I agree with you, but it's a budget amount, I believe, you know, how we track that is when we fill two positions. We're gonna be, you know, like, I'll be honest, I mean, it's clear knowledge, we have a couple doctors gonna be leaving eventually, one's already part-time out in Tumbler Ridge, so. Okay, any more discussion in regards to, and Ms. Scott, I don't want to put staff on the line, but like, don't want to hold budget up, and I understood what I heard, but I just want to just confirm again, this isn't gonna hold up our April 16th meeting.
From what I heard from the Director of Finance, and I will give her the chance to either confirm or deny what I'm about to say, but what I heard from the Director of Finance was that she is still working on balancing those figures for the report to council anyway, and that adding this $10,000 as a line item would not be a significant detriment in her progress in preparing that report. So I will ask the Director of Finance if that is accurate.
Yeah, to Mayor and Council, I will add this as a separate line, I can bring that in, it won't hold up budget any more than me trying to reconcile right now. It would be an additional bump to the value of the 9% of what we're at, I think we might be going slightly over, not by much, and it will get reviewed in council's next budget next year, so you'll have that time and opportunity to look at the actuals.
Perfect, thank you to staff for that. Okay, gonna call the question, all in favor? Carried. Any more discussion in regards to healthcare task force committee initiatives, recruitment, retention? Okay, moving on, discussions of topics for the Let's Talk, May 21st, 2025, report dated April 7th from the Executive Assistant CAO regarding, discussions of topics for Let's Talk, May 21st, 2025. Recommendation, the council receives this report for discussion, Secretary, Counselor Gillick, all in favor? Carried. A couple comments, I believe we should probably do an overview from our previous Let's Talk. I think we have some updates in regards to cement, for sure, in regards to our sidewalks, I think it's very, very important that we dialogue that back to our community. I know myself as the mayor, I stood up and made a promise that we would definitely be doing sidewalks in 2025, and we are doing that with the help of our CAO, who's worked so hard to get those i's dotted and those t's crossed, that this process is gonna happen. So, I totally appreciate all the work Ms. Scott has done on this one project, obviously with her staff, but it was huge, pretty much a big initiative when she first started, I believe she made the promise at Let's Talk as well, so she's, again, came forward and done the job to make sure that was ready to go. But I do think we should go back and do that overview, I think we should do a budget overview at this May 21st as well, just talk about what we have in capital, and stuff that's going forward, which in regards to our heavy asphalt replacement program, some of the equipment we're looking at purchasing this year through reserves. I also believe, and I'll go to the rest council, but I don't think it hurts to have a topic about the fire hall. I know it wasn't passed, we've given clear direction back to staff, what the next process is, but I don't think it's wrong to bring it up, what those, what that conversation was. I know Ms. Scott and myself met with Northern Health, and we asked about, maybe it was at the, maybe it was, might have been at the health task force meeting, but I did ask Northern Health to obviously attend the next Let's Talk, as the election's over, and I think it's very important that they're there. People can hear firsthand some of the concerns from our residents, but they can hear some of the feedback from Northern Health in regards to, you know, maybe some of our Dr. Wheat times, and some of the stuff that is maybe being seen emerge, that is putting a hard scenario on some of the early morning doctor appointments. If they go in, they can't, they don't take walk-ins. So I think it's good dialogue, so, those would be the items I would suggest. Counselor Norbury, and then Counselor Gillick.
Thank you, Mayor Kalki, yeah, some of the themes, looking back at the questions, I think just general pillars of our community needs, housing, it'd be great if we can give an update to how the demolition of the, how the low-income housing on Chamberlain was going. We can't, we can't prepare that now, because, I mean, it's in progress. I also think it'd be a good idea to bring up the results of our controlled burn, which I believe is happening at the end of April, you know, successes, failures, are we gonna continue? Hearing from Mr. Robinson, it sounded like that's the trend of the future, and it'd be great to inform residents what level of success we had, because if this is the way of the future, I know I have my reservations, but I think it's great to bring that up. I think, you know, having Northern Health there is very important, I don't think PC housing is great unless we're selling tomatoes. Is there an option for us to invite SC-59? I appreciate this puts a counselor in conflict, so we can pause, but I believe that it would be worthwhile to have something about what's happening of the state of our education system, whether that's something from SC-59 saying, hey, this is where we're at, this is where we're going, I know they're doing a lot of initiatives. I know from my personal knowledge from, you know, representative at the school board, they're doing a lot, and for the residents to hear of that, I think it'd be good, even though it's not our realm, it's not our role, but still, you know, they are allies in building a community here, so those would be my comments, thanks.
Thanks. Yeah, and I'll leave it up to council when it comes to education, again, if we start taking the realm out to all these subsidiaries, and I mean, the reason I said Northern Health is because we've had them at the table, we start opening up more and more, to me, it's not Let's Talk with council anymore, but I'll leave it up to council, I understand where you're coming from. Again, I think we can ask, you know, I mean, it doesn't hurt to work with SC-59 and, you know, do an open house in Tumbler Ridge, or whatever, I mean, I believe our local trustee can do an open house in Tumbler Ridge and give updates if they so decide, but that would be my comments. Counselor Norbury, I'll come back to you, but I'll go Counselor Gillick first.
Like all the suggestions, fire hall, wildfire, that'll be interesting to see how it all shakes out. I just wondered if we would have a she- I just wondered if we would have a sheet with the answers to the questions that were in this report. So we've been provided with 10 questions there, and rather than maybe going over them there, like have a FAQ with, with the answers. And then that way, those things are already talked about, and if they want to clarify or whatever. Because that, some of them have probably already been answered. So that was only my only input.
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Kalki. I just wanted to just agree with you. I think you make a very good comment about diluting the purpose of what we're doing there. Yeah, thanks for talking that one out. Appreciate it. Yeah, we should, we should probably keep SD59 as a separate issue. Thanks.
Thanks. Anything else for topics from other council? Well, you did a pretty good job then. Ms. Scott can never direct that we should have other staff there. Previously, when we were allowed to have Northern Health tenant, it wasn't a election year. We did have our local fire chief there, just because he worked so side, so side-by-side with, with them. I'll leave that in your realm. To me, I think we had BCM as there as well. I'll leave that in your realm. Like, I don't know if Tumblr, if council wants BCM as there as well. I believe there is some concerns from Northern Health's side with BCM. Sometimes in regards to patient transfers, and it's not BCM's fault, it's just on the patient's condition, what, when a paramedic has to have a nurse onboard with, with drugs are being ran through an IV. But it has put us on diversion. That's why we see those short five-hour, five-hour or six-hour diversions, because we have an ambulance doing a code red transfer. But I don't know. I, I can always reach out to BCM to bring about the council, the next PMP. Maybe get some dialogue from them if they want to attend, and then leave it up to Ms. Scott after I hear about it for BCM. Counselor Hoffman?
Again, throwing a bug out there for everybody's ears. I think it's a good idea to have these organizations that we do work with, but even if it's on cycle or not even a Let's Talk, but a separate open house or that, and just keep track, are we touching all our bases every year? And I heard you say it earlier, Mayor, Let's Talk's really council to residents. Like, that's, if that's the core, then let's keep it as the core and occasionally mix it in. But I, I don't have any objection to making sure BCM, SD59, whomever has an open house that we are part of or at, at least attend. But I guess what I'm saying is, I suggest not putting it out to BCM at this point in time with everything that we have. One vote, if you will.
Yeah, no, I don't think it needs to be voted on. I mean, it's clear direction. I, I think Northern Health's important, but we can leave the other ones out. I think there's something, maybe we can look at something else, or, I think we'll wait till council business, see if anything comes up in the, in the meeting that happened in Dawson. Curious. And then go from there. But I think that's good enough topics. And we got a fairly hu- huge budget, a really huge capital to discuss with our residents in regards to asphalt. Obviously downtown sidewalks, which is gonna be huge. Willow Hall in regards to the auto doors, looking at the ramp. I believe staff's looking at the washing door, see if there's something we can do there, stuff like that. So I think it's huge to have that discussion. Like the update from BC Housing. I think Ms. Scott and I may be able to get one in regards to where they're at. Seems like they move a little faster when Ms. Scott emails them now. I, I don't know what happened there, but she, she definitely gets a quicker reply, so we can get an update and get it out there for that. So. Is that good for staff? Staff's good with that?
Just for some clarification.
Yep.
The date that you've picked is during Local Government Awareness Week. UBCM has not announced the theme yet for 2025. But we have had some conversation at the senior management table about staff having some tables there beforehand with some information for residents. And, and hopefully being able to focus on whatever that theme is for 2025. But for clarification, when you mentioned maybe having the fire chief there, were you meaning at the Let's Talk or, or beforehand when staff has tables there? And then second question for clarification, does council like the PowerPoint presentation? Do you want to see staff continue with the PowerPoint, or do you just want to tackle those conversations yourselves?
Yeah, I'll do the first one. I think we can, again, I can't direct to have your staff there. Just wanted to put that filler out there. So previously, we, we had a lot of issues with Northern Health. Nothing with our fire department, maybe some concerns with BCM. And because they work so much together, we brought them together. But, you know, listening, and not all council has chimed in, but maybe we're gonna leave BCM inside of this and just deal with Northern Health. So I, I don't think, like, does the fire chief or that organization come together with, with, working with our Northern Health facility, probably? But maybe this is just an opportunity for Northern Health to give an update on where they're at. I mean, we're obviously hearing it in the, in the health task force, but, you know, maybe this is an update from their side in regards to, I don't want to say if it's misuse of our merge, because I think it's, the emergency is not mine, it's the individuals that went there. And I can't tell somebody how to diagnose themselves in an emergency. They, that's where they're gonna go. And I will never tell somebody not to go to a merge. But they can, they can explain a little bit more deeper than I can on that one. So to me, that's like, I, I think that's my understanding from, from council, the way it was talked about, and so we might be just good with Northern Health. When it comes to, in regards to the presentation, I, I think it's great to have that. I think you've done a, a great job there. You hit your first one running when you came, and I, I was, I thought it was well, well-received. I think it gives us, you know, some information there. It doesn't mean that we don't still give our update. But, but I think it goes in a little deeper. I mean, for myself, I'm good with it. I think it gives a good inlook for residents on exactly how it all fits together. I mean, that's a, to me, a staff realm on some of it. And I think you, you knocked out the ballpark on your first presentation, only here for a short term, and you're able to run with that. So, at my opinion, I'm, I'm all, I'm good with it. Counsel? Oh, no, not four of us. Yep. Sounds like you're doing a presentation, Ms. Scott. And, and I think it's great. And, and I, and I think you've involved yourself so much with our community of coming on board. I, I think it's really important, and I think that dialogue that you can have is, is great, because people know they can reach out, you, you know. I, I think it's great. So you've done a great job there. Counselor Gillick?
Yeah, I really appreciated the, the PowerPoints, and I, what came to me when Mayor Kalki was talking was, I think it's a really good opportunity for us to celebrate staff, like if that, you know, like if there was something else that I could add to that, we get to see on a daily basis what different staff are doing and stuff like that. But even our awards for long-term staff and stuff happens at the Christmas dinner. So I would really, I think it would be an appropriate time, and I don't know what the rest of council thinks. But I, I think it'd be a great time if there are some staff that you want to celebrate, or I really like the newsletter that you guys put out, and I think it's a good way to have everybody say, hey. You know, I, I don't know if that's what the rest of council's looking for, but I would, you know, like even if, so you don't have to do some budget thing on sidewalks or something. Although that's not a bad thing. I'm just saying, like, that might be some way where we can celebrate staff, because we don't often get an opportunity to do that.
And I'll leave that to you. I think when we talk about what this is, this is about, to me, sometimes residents hammering the elected officials, and I think we start bringing some staff into it. You're okay to come into it. But I think if you start bringing some of your staff, that, that could go south. That's why after every year of the Christmas party and awards, I always mention on, on who received what, because I think it's important for residents to know how many years a service certain individual has. But when we start talking, I mean, if you want to do an overview of your departments, you have at, or you do whatever you want, I think you've done a great job, but I, I'd be concerned. I mean, I, I don't want to see staff, I mean, municipality, Ms. Scott, you've changed the, the culture and stuff like that so far with the nine months or 10 months. I don't even know how many months it's been now, but I, I just don't want to see that go backwards. So I think we need to, it's right during the federal election, folks, so. Let's be honest here. I don't know what's gonna happen to that one. So I, I just, I think it needs to be more, let residents hammer council. Not the mayor, but council. Okay. Okay, moving on to scheduling meetings. Staff has put multiple months in our agenda tonight, and the reason of it is as regards to some events, meetings coming up later on with Northern Health in June. So June 17th, mark your calendar. That's why we've done it this way, to make sure that it's well out in advance of, of what's going on for us, so that they can make that. So we, we've already booked a meeting. Chiro, the CEO of Northern Health, will be coming to Tumble Ridge. He's already gonna be in the area, so he'll be coming in before council. This is one of our concerns when we started talking about minister meetings and stuff like that. Well, let's, let's get some of this stuff answered. Doesn't mean we don't meet with the health minister. That's all right. But, you know, like, let's, let's have that dialogue with the people that are actually on the boots on the ground, working in the north. He presented to the PRD here not too long ago, month ago. They had some pretty good updates with that one, on some of the statistics and stuff they're working through, and some of the new programs they're doing. I, I think it'd be great to hear him, and I, I think what that'll do is give us some even more information to, to, for our ask from the minister. So. Counselor Knoxanna?
Thank you. I just want to add, Let's Talk, May 21st. If we can add it to our calendars, that would be great.
Yeah, gonna, want a pen? No, I agree with you. Staff will have that in the next one. Counselor Gillick?
I know we have it on our, like, our condensed calendar, but NCLGA is not listed on here, and I believe that will hit a PPC meeting.
Yep, 12th to the 15th.
And then FCM is the 28th to the 2nd. We're flying back in here on the 2nd, so that's three of us. And I can't remember the times. I'm not sure. Anyways, I just, I, I can double-check that, and we can bring it up at the next meeting. But just something to keep in mind. I just don't have my flight stuff in front of me.
Good. Well, one thing, there's only three elected officials. Two for sure going at this time, possibly three. Possibly four once the by-election is done, once we know, and, I mean, I'm assuming people can zoom in if they go to NCLGA.
Okay, yep, I'm good.
If we don't have quorum, we cancel the meeting.
All right.
We can wait till we get closer to see what people's realms are.
Okay, perfect.
That's, that's the thing. I, I think, you know, maybe we need to have a broader outlook from, from the elected official side, where, you know, maybe we need to, maybe just give direction to staff that, to start blocking out meetings that happen during the UBCM, the NCLGA, the FCM. We can wait and see, maybe after this year with Keep a Rule, how, how council engages with it. Last year was amazing. I'm gonna be straightforward. I, I'm excited this year, and last year is my first year, so if it's just as good this year, I, I know which meeting I'll be attending yearly, because it's, it's such an engaging conference. So then maybe it's worth adding that to make, we make sure that we don't block any meetings in there, in case there's people away. It is hard to zoom in if you're flying or just landing, so. I think maybe we can wait, and if we have to move the meeting, the PMP, maybe we have to move it to the 26th or something, just to have it. Okay, work, or, you know, you guys are flying out? When you guys fly out again, sorry?
To FCM?
Yeah.
End of May, May 28th?
Right, and 28th?
To the 2nd.
To the 2nd, so. Okay. There's three of you, go. Maybe, you know, I'll be honest with you, like, maybe we need to move that one to the 3rd right now. I'm gonna be honest, like, that's, we know there's three of you possibly gonna be not here, because obviously you're flying back that day. You know, maybe I'd request that somebody puts a motion on the floor that we move it to the 3rd. Just before we do that, I, I know we're looking far out, Ms. Scott, but does the 3rd work in possibly staff's vision? Do we see any issues there?
I don't see any issues, no.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Knoxanna?
Thank you. As of right now, we allegedly land at 2:30 in Fort St. John on that day. So I'm gonna motion we move that meeting to the 3rd.
Okay, secondaire, Counselor Gillick, discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried. So the regular meeting will be on June 3rd. Okay, anything else in regards to scheduling meetings? Okay, anything from staff side, Ms. Scott? I know we talk lots and I forget lots, so getting old. Everything's?
I don't think we're missing anything on the calendars. I do just want to remind council and anybody who may be watching, or anybody who may be here present, that the, the next advance poll for the by-election is this Wednesday. That will be here at the town hall, and then regular, the regular election day is on Saturday, April 12th, at the community center.
Thank you. And then just Volunteer Appreciation Day as well is coming up in April. Pardon me, just so council's aware. Okay. Anything else from council? Any notice of motions? Okay. Counselors' business. Just before we get into, first, I'll, I'll guess I'll just do it this way. Thanks to Counselor Gillick for submitting for the museum and the library board, and then to Counselor Norbury and Counselor Knoxanna for the health task force. Just before I do anything off the floor, I am gonna put a motion on the floor that we ask staff to reach out to the light of the North Rockies to start opening a discussion in regards to the contract in regards to cleaning of Willow Hall. Secondaire, Counselor Gillick, discussion. Okay, and the reason I put that out, and, and I did talk to Ms. Scott, so she was aware. Normally, we'd never put that out in council, but that's a notice of motion, but we did have a delegation earlier, and I think it's prompt that we, that staff reaches out and have some dialogue to see where we're at, because this could make a difference if we don't have capacity, what that does in regards to it, so. Okay, can I call a question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, any counselor business from the floor? Counselor Knoxanna?
Thank you. I was able to attend the School District 59 budget update and strategic direction update. There... Sorry, I wasn't sure what you were doing.
Oh, no, I, I, I just won't.
Okay. There was lots of good conversation and some roundtables on maybe where the strategic direction isn't aligning with, or isn't working in communities, what can be done, what's some, some ideas. So I'm hopeful that they have heard our recommendations from Tumble Ridge. Some of the things like attendance rates are really low, grad rates are abysmal. There's just some really big indicators that things are wrong in our schools, and I think we've been very clear from this table as well, that our schools do need some help, and, and how can they focus attention to rectify maybe some of these, these situations? So I'm excited to see what happens now, if maybe some dollars get specifically put towards recruitment and retention initiatives, or what can be done to help attendance rates. I had some suggestions. Not sure I'll be invited back for my suggestions, but yeah, looking forward to see what they do, because our schools absolutely need some help.
Thank you. If I may ask, Counselor Knoxanna, when you were there, did you repeat yourself like you did last year in regards to the timing? The day of the week, how great it isn't for, I would think, some of our residents, but also our educators. I mean, they expect to be there, but they're working till a certain time. Was that discussed again?
So we were able to leave comment cards, and I again wrote it in the comment card that hosting a meeting at 5 o'clock in Dawson Creek on a Wednesday night isn't the best use of time for anybody who has to travel 120 kilometers after a school day or even after work. I mean, our D-PAC representatives were invited and weren't able to attend. Specifically, I think that time just doesn't work. You have to be back at work the next morning. We got home at 10 o'clock. And the weather was good. If the weather had have been terrible, that would have been a very long night. So I would really feel for any educators who then had to be in a classroom at 8:30 in front of 30 kids.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else from counselor, for counselor business up the floor? Going once? Okay. Just update, counsel, I attended COFI in Prince George this, last week. The first day was tough. It was a very tough conference at the first. I'd be straightforward, it was, it was tough, man. We, we all talked about it. It was, the first day was tough. It was, it was dry. There was lots of comments made about that. It was, wow, it was, it was tough. I found that, now I know why I don't like to go into COFI and Prince George, because I think Vancouver is, they're closer, they have different panelists and everything else, but yeah, it was, the first day was tough. Again, it is all about the tariffs. Day one was, every panel that went up there talked about the tariffs and talked about, you know, right now, no, we're not doing it now, we're gonna hold it off for so many days, but then what happens, happens later. The big talk is, is now is, how do we start using more Canadian BC wood in Canada, not just in BC, but in Canada? I mean, you know, people are still importing wood from elsewhere, so they're using BC wood. They also talked about changing building codes and, and such when it comes to higher apartment buildings, if it's three stories or six stories. You know, getting, making sure that, I'm gonna forget the word. Somebody help me out. Who builds the plans, sorry? Yeah, architect or whatever, that they look at that, what they can use for wood, right? Like, if you use these, this part of this, this beam and stuff like that, you can actually gain two more floors with using wood. So that was a bigger, big driver. The other big driver was, they talked about it way before the ministry came in and the premier. But pretty much said it's been approved that we're gonna be moving to 40, 45 million cubic meters. I mean, we didn't even cut the meters that we had this year or last year. We were undercut. So, I mean, we can move it, move it and increase it, but if we're not cutting what we're actually allowed to, it's tough. It's very, very tough. Lots of talk about Canfor in regards to the Peace Region. Nobody was there from Canfor. Day two was a little bit better. I, I'll be honest, the new Day two was a little bit better. I'll be honest, the new ministry of Forest, wow, he is, he is young, and man, does he have a, well, first, he has a mandate letter, and that's to get us to the forty-five million cubic meters, but does he have drive? Like, he is definitely moving things around. BC Timber Sales is going to be, they're being looked at and trying to move things, parts around, because it's not fully working like it should be. There is a gentleman from the BC Forest Timbers, and I forget his name, well, he sat at my table too, and I want to say it's Tim Codwell, but I could be wrong. But he came up with a thing, and the ministry really used that from the dialogue from the table they set out, and it's, cut the tree when it's right. Make sure you take it to the right mill for the right wood at the right time at the right cost. And they're not doing that. So, you know, whatever mill has the cutting rates that block, goes in and cuts, and it ships it through their mill. You know, maybe that mill's only doing two-by-sixes is the biggest sawmill they ever cut they have. Where these trees should have went to a mill that could cut two-by-eights, because they're wasting. So there was lots of talk about that. They're bringing on more and more, obviously, everybody's aware that BC Wildfire Services now have a full-time mechanism, so they keep members on full-time. They definitely talked about, obviously, them going to the US this year for the fires down there. But Canada actually looks at BC as the number-one forest fighting system that is out there in Canada for wildfire fighters, is BC. So that was good to hear. I did dialogue with BC Wildfire Services in the trade show. Great conversation with Lydia, again, that was here last year or the year before. And they're all a while aware of these controlled burns. Soto First Nation was doing theirs last weekend. So they did a big burn, and whether it actually went ahead or not, I'm not sure, but it was looking like they were going to go ahead and ignite on Saturday morning with favorable weather. But everybody's looking at these culture burns, controlled burns, a way of getting rid of that dry fossil. So. Yeah, it was, day one was a little rough, but again, I thought it was weird on day two that a panelist, and one of the panelists was from, a counselor from Vancouver. I seen this at the BC Natural Resources, and I thought it was weird. Like, I really thought it was weird. And what they're suggesting is, is we've all looked at this as the wrong, and, you know, I did talk to her afterwards, I said, but do you realize that, you know, you came to Prince George, so BC actually happens outside of past hope, right? So we had to chuckle about that. But what Vancouver's saying, and because they're one of the bigger cities in the province, is we're disconnected from these small rural northern communities, even southern communities, that they need us, and they can help us. You know, they talk about, like, you know, the wood and the fiber, like, yeah, they might not have a mill right in the city of Vancouver, but they can change some of their bylaws and zoning bylaws to allow more wood structure, which helps the wood, right? And I think we forget about that as elected officials, thinking that we can dialogue with, you know, representatives from the city of Vancouver, Burnaby, Victoria, some of these bigger centers, we all think, oh, nothing exceeds past hope, BC, right? So I thought that was eye-catching, because I heard the same thing from the mayor of, oh my God, got everything in my head, Port Quillam at the BC Natural Resource Forum. Same concept. They understand that our gas, our coal, all that actually, you know, builds their community centers. So there's definitely more dialogue coming out on how we can all work together as elected officials. So. I did have a couple of meetings, but I think let's go over it next time, just because I know we have a close, so. Counselor Julik?
I just wanted to know if you were able to talk to them about all the log trucks on the highway. You've brought that up before.
Yeah, so I did not. My question didn't get asked, so they did those Slido, Slidos, I think that's one of the ones they use. Again, I'm not a big fan of that. They censored them. So mine actually got pulled off, just as it started to get voted on. It was actually pulled right off, because they censor it. So I did dialogue with the Minister of Forest a bit, just off the side. They were busy too, and they wanted to get, there's lots of people who wanted to talk to him, and I didn't preset up a meeting, but, you know, they're saying, like, you know, how do we fix it? Like, I don't have all the answers. If somebody has the answer, bring it forward. If you don't have a mill in the area, you shouldn't be allowed to cut wood. Like, that's my point. You shouldn't be allowed to cut wood here, then. Give it to Wes Fraser, give it to the Tunnel Ridge Community Forest, give it to Chatwens Community Forest, expand their community forest. At least they sell the local mills. I mean, they get the best bang for their buck. I mean, don't get me wrong, if the community forest sells it to LP or that, but, you know, again, we have Fort St., or the electorial area C mill shutting down out by Fort St. John. Like, you know, that's Canfor, and they're still cutting wood. And I'll be honest, I actually counted the empty trucks as I was heading into Prince George. I counted ninety-two. Now, coming home, I didn't know where they were all turning off. So, I mean, are they going into Mackenzie? Are they, because you see some later on, I mean, somewhere in the past. Now, there was some coming up our Tunnel Ridge Highway, I followed one. It was great to see it, right? So I'm well aware of it, but I needed those true facts before I could really, but I put it out there. But again, it was censored. It was a censored question, so. Premier Eby, to be honest, I almost talked about him a little bit. Same thing, I think he did well. Talked about, obviously, the tariffs and what they're going to do and stuff like that. He supports his mandate letter to the Ministry of Forest about the forty-five million cubic meters. Pretty much it. Talked about the wood and what we can do, and we need to add more. And, you know, I think that was a talk in Vancouver last year with Counselor Knoxanna over there, that we need to add more, these plants need to add more, like, you got to take a log, but do more with it, get that value out of it. So, you know, they have a new CAO with COFI. She's, I think, two months into her role. She did great, I thought. She did a really good job of getting the mandates and speaking, so it was good. That part. Counselor Norbury?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kalka. Yeah, the COFI is definitely a little dry. You can see why I don't attend them every year. But, you know, just like, getting some more information to the conversation. Previous years, you know, there's always these issues that are affecting the lumber industry. You know, the last big, the last big issue was Caribou. And, you know, every single head of all of the major forestry companies all blamed that for this, for this, their issue. And now they're blaming this. And don't get me wrong, tariffs are a real issue. But also, if you look at the top forestry companies in the states, four to five are the, four to the five biggest companies here in Canada. So realistically, this is a ministerial problem that they need to address. I mean, I have my opinions on how they can deal with it, but they have literally taken the ball and just gone south of the border. So, yeah, some comments there.
No, I appreciate it. And, you know, when they talked about, I'll be honest, when they talked about, you know, upping the annual cut, and we haven't done the cut that we're allowed, you know, they're talking about mills running at, you know, they're running at seventy percent or seventy-five. I was sitting right beside a guy from Wes Fraser, and he's like, we're at fifty-two percent. So there is still a fiber issue, but it's not that there's not fiber there, it's getting the permits, getting all this stuff. And that's one thing that Premier Eby did say, is they are working through a different mandate. I think right now they're on about a six-week turnaround for a permit. They are looking to work with walrus, ministry staff from forestry, and there was another one, I apologize, my book's at home, but, to try and get that down to two weeks. Two weeks. That's one of the, one of the big pushes, is get it down to two weeks to get a permit out. So I think that's where the holdup is on some of these mills not being at full capacity. All right. Anything else from council on the floor? Okay, question and answer period. Any questions from the gallery? None? Any emailed questions, Ms. Scott? Thank you. Take the resolution to a closing meeting, please. Counselor Norbury?
That the April seventh, two thousand twenty-five special meeting of council be closed to the public according to section ninety-one E, J, and K of the community charter to permit discussions about E, the acquisition, disposition, or expropriation of land or improvements if the council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality, and J, information that is prohibited or information that if it were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under section twenty-one of the Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act, and K, negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of a municipal service that are at their preliminary stages and that in the view of the council could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality if they were held in public.
Secuder, Counselor Julik, all in favor? Carried. Five-minute recess.